Just a quick note from the state that I have to read pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on people that may gather in one place. The meeting of the town of Chelmsford Board of Selectmen will conduct to be a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by the members of the public or parties with a right or a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.chelmsfordma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by accessing Chelmsford Telemeter website at www.chelmsfordtv.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access procedures in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Thank you, and I also would like to remind everybody that this is a recorded meeting. It is public record. Also, if you have questions or concerns and you're muted and would like to speak, please type in the chat box on the right. If you're using on the Zoom, if you just kind of wave your mouse over the bottom of the screen, the box will pop up and say chat, click on that and you'll be able to see the chat box. And you can type in there. Anything typed in chat, whether it's to the entire group or to someone individually as a private chat is actually part of the public record and can be seen by the town if someone has requested to see these records. So just keep that in mind. Anything private, public in the chat screen is part of the public record. With that, we'll start with public service announcements.
Okay. We have one this evening. The Chelmsford Open Space Stewardship is going to host Warren Pole property walking tours on August 22 and August 23 at 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Anyone wanting to go on the tour should use the farm driveway next to 101 Boston Road and park by the barns. You need to wear a mask and closed-toed shoes. Expect about one hour of tours and up to a mile of walking on uneven ground. You should also be prepared with things like bug spray, hats, water, sunscreen. And please note that this is a private property. It is only accessible during these tours. So especially town meeting reps, if you want to see the property before voting later this month, this is your opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. And with that, that brings us to item three of the agenda open session. We already have people, we have a person queued up into the chat box. Regina Jackson would like to speak. Can we unmute Regina?
Yeah. 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 Yes, thank you. This is Regina Jackson and Mike Jackson, also known as John Jackson. And we are here at this Zoom meeting to ask you why you are trying to replace our town manager, Paul Cohen. You have never bothered to explain to Chelmsford residents why, in the middle of a pandemic, you want to replace a dedicated, extremely competent, well-respected, honest, hard-working manager who has devoted over 14 years to Chelmsford. We've watched or attended all the board of selectmen meetings since January. The January meeting where you blindsided town manager Paul Cohen, and clearly, there has been some backroom shenanigans going on. The board of selectmen yourselves have never questioned town manager Paul Cohen's job performance, ever. You gave him a rave review six months prior to your attempt to start to remove him in January of 2020. And to recap that, in January of 2020, you not only blindsided Paul Cohen, town manager, you also blindsided the Chelmsford residents by announcing you were not going to renew Paul's contract. You did not give any reasons. You did not give the town residents any explanation. You did not follow what was in or what is in the town charter, which explicitly dictates the procedures to remove a town manager, including the resolution. And actually, it's Section 4-7, and it tells you the procedure. Prior to adopting a resolution, you must, you adopt the resolution, and then a copy of the resolution must be delivered to the town manager forthwith. Then, the town manager has the opportunity to request that the board provide a written statement setting forth the reasons for any removal. And then, the town manager can request a public hearing. You didn't do any of this. You did not follow the town charter procedures. You violated the town charter. This was a backroom deal. If it was not illegal, it was certainly unethical. You'd never authored an explanation or rationale. You denied town manager Paul Cohen due process. You insinuated that there may be cause to remove when there was no cause to remove, and you had never clarified the record, which is essentially impugning the reputation of town manager Paul Cohen. Fast forward to your meetings, March 5, 2020, and April 12, 2020. After the March 5, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting, which was weeks of absolutely, with no explanation from you at all, you voted 3 to 2 to renew town manager Paul Cohen's contract until June of 2021. You came out and you read in a statement you were going to extend the town manager's contract one year to June 30, 2021. A vote will be taken in June 2021 as to whether to extend the contract again. Great. So everybody in town with the impression, well, what you told everyone in town was Paul's contract, town manager Paul Cohen's contract was renewed until June of 2021, when in fact, you totally lied to us. Because the executive minutes of the March 5, 2020 meeting, and also the April 12, 2020 meeting, clearly indicate you had absolutely no intention of honoring that contract. You had already laid the groundwork to replace Paul Cohen. You had already contracted a search agency or a search group to look into getting a new town manager, how much it would cost, etc. It was very deceptive. And it's very important to note that this was March 5, 2020. This was prior to the town election. This was prior to the COVID-19, when we shut down. And it was, and the reason why I said it was prior to the town election is because Chairman Lefebvre, you were on the ballot unopposed. And by coming out and telling everybody, or by the board of selectmen coming out and stating that town manager Paul Cohen's contract was until June of 2021, it's in saying that then, the board of selectmen in June of 2021 would take that up, and knowing that there are two, two members up for reelection in the spring of 2021, and the idea that possibly this board of selectmen, that your, this board is not going to look like in 2021, the way it looks now. And then, that board would have the, it would be that board's job to look into Paul's contract and town manager Paul Cohen's contract and see if they want to renew it or not. But by telling everybody that it was all set 3 to 2, he's good for a year, then you, you weren't honest with us. So there was a real possibility, if we had known the truth, somebody would have mounted a write-in campaign against you. And there was a possibility that, that you could very well have lost your seat. But we won't know because we were lied to. Also, there's a huge issue with the executive session minutes with, on April 12, where you were adamant about adding clauses to town manager Paul Cohen's contract. And the problem is that these, this, this was after the email from the contractor Harvey in town, which he sent to everybody, where he pretty much explicitly says that he was the one that had the language put in the, in town manager Paul Cohen's contract. Let me read it to you, because it's very disturbing and it's so wrong. This, no, finish. You read this and you had this, excuse me, you had this read into the public record. I'm not going to read it. I am only going to please let you know that this was March 30, 2020. This is prior to your April 12, 2020 meeting. And this contractor Harvey says, he says, right in this email that he sent to everybody in town, that he, there were three members in favor not to renew and two in favor to renew. When I got word of this, meaning himself, one phone call changed the vote, and angry Paulie did not get his way. He also says that he has reliable information that's divulged by the selectmen, that he obviously has access to the executive session, which is so wrong. Then he goes on to say about the language that was inserted, the April 12. This is weeks before. So how did he know what was going on? Well, obviously, you told him. "I am happy," rest assured, he says, rest assured. "Yes, it was me that foiled Paul's act of board of select person." He puts so many disparaging things in here. It's disgusting. Then he states, "I am very happy that the new language was added to the 12-month contract proposal, so now Paul will not sign it." Proof. This is so wrong. It's unethical. It's backroom dirty politics, and it's corrupt. Let me finish. I'm almost done.
And Emily, you're on mute?
What? Okay, okay. So anyways, as far as I can tell, and as far as anybody who's been paying attention can tell, your decision to remove town manager Paul Cohen did not involve input from any of the following. I don't know, because you never told us anything. You didn't ask people who work for Paul Cohen. You didn't ask anything from people who work with Paul Cohen, from any department heads in town, the Chelmsford Police Chief, the Chelmsford Fire Chief, the senior citizens, council of aging folks, any responsible committees in town, any regional statewide organizations to which Paul, town manager Paul Cohen's been associated with for the past 14 years, Chelmsford Business Association members, town meeting reps, school department administration personnel, or union reps. From what is public record and what has been out there, apparently, the only people that were given input to the decision to remove town manager Paul Cohen were your friends and associates, Ivy the contractor, and then Officer Good, the union cop, who has had a personal vendetta against town manager Paul Cohen openly for over a year. It's, and I'm not just saying that. He wrote it in the email. So.
Regina?
I am going to.
We normally, we normally, we normally give three minutes.
I'm concluding. I will talk as fast as I can. We request that the board of selectmen apologize to town manager Paul Cohen. You honor the contract you signed that goes until June of 2021 as you represented to the town, Chelmsford town citizens, and that Chairman Ken Lefebvre, you should resign. You have put your own self-interest above the interest in the good of the people of the town of Chelmsford. You were not honest about the rationale or the process you put into place to remove town manager Paul Cohen. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Next up, Sam Chase would like to speak, and I think I was fairly generous with Regina on the time. We usually have a three-minute time, and I let her go. Sam, if you wouldn't mind following the three-minute rule going forward, I would appreciate it. Can we unmute Sam?
And I should start my video. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in the interest of time, I'll ask you a question. Will the public have an opportunity to speak during the agenda item Town Manager Search Committee? If not, I would like to make a statement now. If that is the, if you will allow that, then I would like to make a statement at that time. Your choice.
I, I don't know. I'll take input from the fellow board members. Pat, do you have any?
You know what? What I'd suggest is that we let these people speak now and then take that agenda item up immediately after the public is done. That way, we can basically let these people go once, you know, once that's done.
Fair.
And, you know, it's.
Sam, you want to speak? And then we'll take it out of order.
Okay. And again, Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, and I thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Earlier today, I sent the board of selectmen a letter, and I would like to read portions, and you have that, and I would respectfully ask that you make that written document a part of the meeting record. And I would like now to read portions of that letter into the record, and in the interest of time, I will not read the whole thing. I will read what I believe are the salient portions. So if I may be permitted to do that. To the select board, tonight's meeting agenda item. On March 5, 2020, you voted publicly to extend the town manager's current contract by one year to June 30, 2021. From the March 5 public meeting session, the record states, "A vote will be taken in June 2021 as to whether to extend the contract again." That public statement led people to believe that you would decide at the end of that term whether or not to extend the manager's employment with the town and to vote accordingly. That makes all the sense in the world, especially considering that the April 2021 election may result in a different board composition. Unfortunately, that public statement came right after your March 5, 2020 executive session meeting, where four of you made it crystal clear that you had no intention, whatever, of considering, quote, "whether to extend the contract again." During that executive session, you gave the manager a one-year extension based on an understanding that he should have no expectation of continuing in office at the end of that term. You also made it clear that absent that understanding, you would not have granted that extension. All of this can be found in the executive session meetings, March 5 and April 21, which residents can read for themselves. Your March 5 public vote is completely inconsistent with your executive session statements. You had no intention of considering an additional extension for the manager, but you told residents that you would take a vote. Based on your actions and your executive session statement, a reasonable person can now conclude that you were trying to disguise your intent not to renew, and that you were trying to mollify those who wanted to believe that you would follow through in your commitment to wait until June 2021 to decide the manager's employment status. And again, I've asked that the entire letter be put into the record. I will not read it, but I will skip to the end in the interest of time. Because of your public statements and the possibility that the board's composition may change before June 2021, it is not now a public understanding that the manager's departure is a foregone conclusion. A screening committee is supposed to be formed to assist in determining the process that will be used to hire a new town manager, when it is certain that the town manager will leave the town's employ as a result of board action, or when the manager submits a formal resignation, whichever event occurs earlier. What is certain is that as of today, you've taken no public action concerning an extension of the manager's employment agreement. It is far from certain that the manager will tender a resignation prior to the expiration of his current agreement. Any attempt now to establish a screening committee is, in my opinion, a further effort to carry out your mission of removing the town manager without a proper public discussion explaining the reasons why you want to take that action. For you to continue to base any action on the notion that the manager self-initiated on his, on his desire to seek other employment is patently absurd, given your March 5 and April 21 executive session meeting statements. It is time for the board to articulate clearly the reasons for wanting to hire a new town manager. It is time for the board to explain its executive session statements and action to Chelmsford citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ken, you're on.
I said, thank you, Sam. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board in open session? I don't see anybody else queued up. I'll give it one more minute. I don't see anybody writing with that. It's okay to close the public session? Just giving one more final call. Can we unmute Emily too? Just, I can't seem to unmute her. She's been wanting to be unmuted. So with that, I'm going to close the public session. And we will then take it out of order and move to, as Pat had asked, to the item number 12, to the Town Manager Search Committee. And I'll start off just by saying, what sparked this comment in the end of the last meeting for me was where we were at with the town manager was, there was an article running in the Lowell Sun where Paul had said that he was looking for a new position. Mike had, Mike McCall had tendered his notice and was moving on. And we were starting to finally see what Paul predicted would happen is that the town manager jobs were starting to open up around the state, including today in Grafton. I guess they posted a new town manager position. And in my mind, as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, my thought was that, well, if we have this potential going on, why wouldn't we not start to prepare for that instead of being reactive, being proactive? It was not a question of, let's start forming. It was more of a, can I poll the board to find out if it's a concern of theirs and something we want to move forward with? I don't know if anybody else on the board has a comment about that?
I would like to know at what point the charter was last reviewed and whether or not it was a widespread phenomenon to Google oneself and find all extant video commentary, webpages, archives, all over, extremely easily.
Like we had the charter review just a few years back. I don't know when it became commonplace to Google somebody in job searches and stuff like that, but.
So was anyone on the Charter Review Committee technologically savvy enough to know how easy it was to find information and records about people? Because if you didn't have people that were technologically savvy enough and social media savvy enough to know that, it may have been overlooked.
I guess I don't see, understand what the, what the point is that you're trying to make, Emily.
When we voted to not renew the contract, it was decided that it was a bad time of year to be doing that, and out of, you know, understanding, we extended the contract for enough time to pass so that everyone could find replacements, new jobs, whatever. Having a public airing of grievances at this point, when there is so much else to do, the, the whole point was to just let everyone move on. The, the whole point was to not stir up more drama, to not bring these garbage accusations of random contractors having a say in anything, like.
Well, Emily, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think a lot of that should be addressed tonight. But before we get to that, do any of the board members have any feedback into the, the search group tonight? And if not, I, I really want to know from Paul. You know, Paul, how do you, because a lot of this goes back to you, and obviously, it all focuses around, how would you like us to handle this? Do you want an open discussion of what we discussed in those executive session minutes?
And Ken, you ask if anybody has anything to say, and then you move on before you allow anybody to say anything.
All right, go ahead, Pat.
I mean, yeah, I would like to make a, a point that we, we did make, take that vote, both in executive session and in open session, that we would extend Paul's contract to next June 30. By my record, by my calculation, he still has over 10 months left in that, that contract. I don't understand the need to, to even talk about establishing a screening committee until we have some sense if and when we're going to have an opening there. I understand you want to be proactive with it, but the town charter also does allow a quite, a quite generous interim position availability when, when there is no town manager, you know, in that office. So I, I don't see the need for, for the urgency to do this at this time. And also, if you go back and you read the, the minutes from March 5, the March 5 executive session meeting that we had, Paul did make an effort. He stated, "He will improve communication with the board, both individually as a group." He asked that board members immediately bring concerns to him as they arise to help him work better with the board. And I also encouraged everybody to do this, to see if, I mean, Paul pledged to do his best to, to improve communication and to try to rectify any, any fractured relationships that may have happened in the past few years. And I, I, you know, give him a lot of credit for that. I don't know if anybody has taken him up on that. I hope they have. I hope, you know, when something does come up, that, that each of us does talk to Paul about issues that we have and how things can improve between us and, and maybe some quirks that he has that, that we don't like, or, or just, or even serious issues that, that that he brings forward that, that cause us to have the feelings that we do towards him. So I, I feel it's premature. I, I, I don't think it should be done at this time. I think we need to wait until there is an opening there, or we know we're going to have an opening coming up in the near future, not 10 months from now.
I would like, I would like to just address the original vote, because I think there's a misunderstanding. I think, and I'll start way back to a conversation you had, Ken, if it's okay, with Paul during the week prior to his dad passing. Because obviously, the timing was very poor. Nobody knew what was going to happen. Paul asked you to, he wanted to get his contract renewed, right? Are you?
Yes. Yep.
So, and you said, all right, so what do you want me to do? He says, we'll put it on the agenda for Monday night's meeting. And you said, well, what if I don't have the three votes? And he said, don't put it on. Am I, am I out of line by this going where I'm at now? Because.
Well, a little, I mean, I'll, I'll say that in the conversation I think I had with, with Paul at the Vision of Values, after the Vision of Values meeting, he asked if he could go on the agenda. And I said, well, are you sure you want to do that? I mean, if you've been watching the meetings, I'm not too comfortable putting it up yet. And I said, why don't you give it some time and wait? And he said, all right, I kind of guess that makes sense. And, or that's how I thought the conversation. But before we get into that, George, I want to go from Paul. This is something he wants to go into in public.
I don't know if he's here. I don't, is he on the screen? I mean, you go, yeah, I can't see.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the, the agenda topic is Town Manager Search Committee. I don't think this is the agenda topic for tonight's meeting in terms of the town manager's contract or, or employment. So that's my initial concern. So I don't know how to respond, because the last thing we need is an open meeting law complaint arising out of this discussion.
Well, Paul, I think if the discussion is, do we need to put a committee together now?
Okay.
I, I, I think the question is, do we feel we need to? And frankly, I don't really need someone coming on a public meeting and telling me I need to step down because I did unethical acts. And then I'm in cahoots with someone that I don't talk to. And then I'm taking and being led around by the nose by someone that's the head of a union. And it couldn't be further from the truth. And, and in an effort to reach out to Regina and talk to her about these issues, you know, she posts emails online, she's sending letters to people's homes about me, ordering on the, on the line of slander. And I have no chance to defend. So if, if we're gonna, you know, talk about it, we should talk about it. And I don't know where else. We haven't really had the chance to have a public forum about this. And, but if you say you don't want it to be public, that's fine by me. But your people have to know that you don't want a public forum on it.
But, but see, here's my point, Mr. Chairman. You just said, my people. Why do you hold me responsible for the actions and decisions of competent adults?
Okay.
And that's been my poor choice of words. Executive session. You seem to hold independent voters to my people. And I think that's inaccurate and unfair.
And I apologize for that comment. And for people that are on the other side of this, you know, it, it's, it's surprising to me that someone can get, come on and make those type of accusations. I would like a chance to go through that timeline. And I would like a chance to, to discuss our decisions. Because I'm fairly confident in my decision, and I thought it was well-based and well-thought-out how I arrived where I arrived at, but I've never really had a chance to speak it publicly. If tonight's not the night, just say it's not the night. But we need to have that night.
I, I have no problem with you having that night. You're, as Chair of the Board of Selectmen, you can schedule a meeting at any time, and you control the agenda. But I want to make it very clear. I am not leading any organized opposition to the Board of Selectmen. or any rally on, that I'm orchestrating to preserve my position in the Town of Chelmsford. And yet some.
I believe you.
To be implied that this is what's going on. And I'm, I'm going to say it again. I am not behind the statements of, that were made today. I find out about the emails and the information at the same time that I receive it, just like you do. So I want to make it clear.
Again, Paul.
Against this board.
I, I don't, I don't.
Hold on, George, one second. I, let me just finish with Paul because clearly I upset him. Paul, I apologize. I, I understand. I believe you. I believe what you're saying. I don't believe you're behind this. And again, poor choice of words on my part. I'm sorry.
All right. Now, let me go back to the point about the contract renewal. I expressed back to the board back last August, August of 2019, that typically the board renews the contract to the manager, at, at least a year in advance of this expiration. And, and then in my 12, at that time, 12 years with the town, that had occurred on prior occasions. The board took no action at that time. So yes, we did have a discussion in January, which at that point was six months prior to the expiration of my employment agreement. And, and, and you did tell me, you didn't know how the board would go. We agree on that, Ken. We had that conversation. And that was how we left it. It was my understanding leaving that conversation that it, it would, it would be on the agenda, which is why following the night when my dad passed, I submitted a list of agenda items, potential agenda items to Christina Bruce in my office. And then, and that was the end of my involvement with the agenda until it was posted and acted that, that following Monday. So that we agree upon. And, and, you know, and you asked me where I am today. Let's go back to that. When we had the discussion in January, you know, and it's in the minutes, the, the, the board said to me, well, what's your expectation in terms of finding another position? And I said, in normal situations, town meeting season ends, you know, jobs open up at the, you know, the end of, of, you know, the, the season, June and so forth. And usually positions get filled by October because you now start the new budgetary and new season. And that's typically what happens. What, what none of us foresaw were two things. One is COVID striking, you know, at the end of March and, and, and the impact that's had in terms of basically shutting everything down, including shutting down municipal employment positions. Yes, there are a few positions being posted, but there was not a single position that's been posted, not one since last January that is at the level of professionalism and experience that I can apply for. So I have not applied. And when I was asked that question by the Lowell Sun or by anybody, my answer is, I know what the board would like for me to do. That was the understanding. At that time, they vote, they voted the year extension, but there's been no opportunities. And here we are in August, there's still no opportunities. But when the board voted in March, you know, in, in the executive session, in the open session, as recorded by the minutes, it was my understanding that my employment with the town would not be readdressed until June of 2021. Because that's what the minutes say. That's what the minutes that you approved. And therefore, I'm surprised as anybody else that this is on the agenda tonight and that you mentioned it at the end of referrals at the end of the last meeting. So that's where it's, that's where it stands. Now, the second thing that's transpired, and I came to the board is nobody expected, or I didn't expect that, that the Assistant Town Manager, Michael McCall, would depart. And he has. I mean, he, you know, he's, he's, he's running out his vacation time right now, but his, his last day of work was last Friday. He starts his new position after Labor Day. So now you're in a situation where at a minimum, you've lost your Assistant Town Manager. If I go to take another position, you lose myself. And then what if you lose the support person in the office or somebody else? You have no administrative knowledge and, and history in that office. That's why I came back to the board at that, at the last meeting, two meetings ago, and said to the board, how would you like me to proceed in terms of hiring an assistant? Because under normal circumstances, I would put an ad out and, and I would hire an assistant permanently, full time. But given the circumstances, you know, you can't do that because any good candidate is going to say, well, who am I working with? And you say, well, well, I'm hiring you, but I'm, I'm out looking for a job and I'll be leaving as soon as I can. You're not going to get anybody, or what you may get, maybe somebody who's just looking for something else beyond being the assistant. So I came to the board and you had no assurances to me that your position had changed. And therefore, as I told the board did, I, I hired a, an interim assistant, a retired, you know, we all know it is now. It's Steve Maffetone, the Emergency Management Director, who's the interim Assistant Town Manager. So that explains what's transpired. But to come to the end of the point is, my point is, is I am, I am enjoying, I get up every morning and look forward to serving the residents of the Town of Chelmsford. I believe in the five months during the COVID thing, we've done an outstanding job in terms of performing services, whether across the board and, and being responsive to the needs of businesses, residents and so forth. And, and getting through a town meeting and now a special town meeting coming up next week. I think I performed well. I think my team has performed well. I think the town's being well served. And so as I sit here today, I'm, I'm not looking for any change of sta, of status in terms of a, a, a search committee being formed. You know, my intent is, 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 as I said, the, the board, it would be, is that I have an appointment through June of 2021. My understanding is the board will take up this matter in June of 2021. And barring the fact that if there's an opportunity that I could apply for, and that assumes that I get that position, you know, so, I mean, I'm, you know, so those are two things that we don't know are going to happen in the future. Will there be a position that's comparable or greater than what I have today? Or at least somewhat? I mean, I'm not going to take a position for a town half our size and, and, and a, and a, you know, a $50,000 pay cut, which is all that's been out there thus far.
Paul, can I ask you a quick question?
From there. So that's where we stand today. So yes, I am following up the, the board's desire and agreement with me, basically, which is find another job. But I can't find one if there isn't one.
So can I ask you a quick question then? Because on one side, you're saying that you understand that your, your contract is till next July. But on the other side, you're saying that if a job came out that was of consummate pay and, and at your level, you would take it.
That's because you've asked me.
Well, I understand that, but, but that's true and I understand that. So am I that far out of line knowing that if a job comes, you're going to take it? And we don't have an Assistant Town Manager and you, you basically have told us there'd be a hole at Town Hall that we would want to at least assemble a commit or consider it as an agenda item to discuss it. I mean, was I that far out of line there knowing those, those pieces of information?
Well, I think the board had two choices. The board could have said, hey, in light of what's happening with the COVID situation and in light with the assistant departing, Paul, we're going to extend your agreement. Well, obviously that didn't happen. I think the other question is, well, you know, the reason I'm looking is because you've asked me to look. I have expressed.
Well, let me ask you this question.
In my tenure, that I wish to retire from the Town of Chelmsford.
In the first meeting where we had the executive session and the board was talking about your contract and you came into the room. And we went around the room and you asked what people were thinking about renewing your contract or not. And the results came out. Was the discussion not about, do you want us to, to talk about this? And you had made a comment to us, listen, if someone finds out and they Google the information and they see it been laid off, it's not going to look good for me. I would like time to digest your decision and time to prepare for this and, and let's keep it under wraps.
That's true. But yet, three days later, that information found its way to the Lowell Sun.
That's true. And I have no control over that. And if we ever find out who did it, that would be fantastic. But I don't know how to find that out and I don't know how to, how to flush it out. Obviously, I've tried and that's not working. My, my next question is, when we were coming down to the end after our fourth executive session meeting, Brian Mazur came in and presented us with an offer that you presented. And your offer was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, to allow us give you a one-year contract and that would allow us to do our search, that would allow you time to find a position. You would continue to accumulate service hours towards your pension. You would be employed while your, and your kids going off to college during the summer and it would allow for transition. And you had said to the board at that time, December was a date you thought you needed to get that done. And at that point, two of the votes changed. Is that correct?
It's within the realm of the.
Fix it where I'm on.
I wouldn't say it's. But basically, what I was seeking for was time. Because as we're seeing today, you know, town manager positions are unpredictable in when they arise. And at that time, pre-COVID, I believe that, expecting a normal environment, that, that I certainly wouldn't have a position in place by the end of fiscal year 20, which was June of, you know, two months ago. And that I expected it, yes, within a year, and probably by October, it's in those minutes that I'd, I'd have a position. But the problem is, the world changed. COVID.
And I totally understand that.
Assistant departing. Those two, those two.
And I agree with you.
Different matters.
The next item I got to ask you about, because again, people won't believe me if I say it, so I'm going to ask you to clarify it. The discussion of the wording of your contract in the wherethes and whether it was going to be there or just a reference to the meeting minutes. Those discussions took place outside of executive session and before we went into the executive session to even talk about them at a later date. Those took place between myself, you and Attorney Mazur, outside of executive session, correct?
Well, but let, let, let me be clear on this. At the vote at the March meeting, okay, it was agreed that the, and the board took the vote, that the board would extend the contract by one year. At, at, you know, and, you know, that it would be renewed, it, it considered for renewal in June of 2021, that the board would provide me a 2% cost of living increase and that the board would forego the performance appraisal because you had sort of de facto done a performance appraisal and sort of no need to repeat that. And, and that basically, the, we were going to come back to, before the next meeting, council would have an employment agreement that the board would sign because it was a ministerial matter that didn't have to be on the agenda. And yet, when, when that meeting arrived, there was no agreement. And then weeks went by. And I went out and reached out to, to counsel saying, where's the agreement? He said, well, we have some language issues. I said, what do you mean? The board voted.
Hold on before.
Was to extend the agreement and now you're talking language. And then we got hung up on those language because I think you were changing the vote of the board.
Okay. So those language issues, though, that was not something that took place in executive session, correct?
I think those were issues that took place between you and counsel. I, I, and, and then it was brought. And it was brought to me and I said, what's going on here? Why are we changing language? And then finally, after a number of back and forth, we were getting nowhere, I just threw in the towel and said, fine, I'll just take the language that's being performed. Let's be done with this. Because it, it just, and I was just disgusted because of the fact is, there shouldn't have been any language changes because that, that didn't reflect what the board had voted at that meeting. And if counsel didn't convey. Then, then I'm sorry, but that, I didn't understand. It was supposed to be a perfunctory matter, not even on the agenda. It was just supposed to be a, a, a case with the, the, the agreement would be there, the boards would, members would sign it when they come in. We were all done because it was a ministerial matter that was following the vote of, of the previous meeting in the executive and open session.
Okay. But I just want to be clear that those language conversations did not take place in executive session.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be on the record.
Stop you guys for just a second. I mean, this sounds like we're getting way off the topic that's on the agenda. You know, like, like Paul said, and you said, you can, a little bit, maybe five or 10 minutes ago. If you want to make this be an agenda item to rehash this whole thing again, we can do that. But I don't think that's what was on the agenda. The agenda was just about a town manager search committee. And I think we should just decide whether to do one or not and go for our next agenda item.
Okay. So I'll hear from the board then.
I would like to suggest we've had counsel with us at every meeting on this topic except this one. And at every step along the way. And if we're going to have this discussion, perhaps it should be a work discussion with counsel present. I will also say that I don't think there was any intent from any member of this board to deceive the public. That's why we took the care to make sure the meeting agenda, the meeting minutes were accurate. And I am in the same place as what I've heard others say, where if going through every piece of rationale is something that wants to be done, okay, put it on an agenda, invite counsel to be there. I think much of it is pretty clear through the minutes. And I think that every member on this board was trying to handle it in a way that would minimize the constant rehash and give Paul some space to work and space to find a job.
Anybody else?
Well, what I started to say earlier was about the original vote. Okay? The original vote, and I think it was Pat, Pat made a motion to renew his contract. She didn't get a second. I made a motion not to redo his contract. And it came out four to one. So rather than go out in the middle of the TV and surprise everybody, what have you, I asked Pat to bring Paul in. And, and explain to him what was going on. And obviously, he was in a little bit of a state of shock, understandably. And each one of us talked a little bit of why, why it was the way it was. And his, his comment was, well, what am I going to do now? If they Google me, this is what they're going to find that I was let go or whatever. So we said, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't discuss it. So we tried, when we went out there, we said, there's no vote. We scheduled the the next meeting, the executive meeting. So I, we've been accused, you and I have been accused of that being in Bill, Bill Harvey's back pocket. I was, I was at a funeral the other day and I was, you know, thought I had talked to one of the speakers and we were going to sit down. And then today I read an email about how I never, whatever, I never, I never say anything. Well, the reason I didn't say a lot of things because we made an agreement that we were just, we wasn't going to badmouth the guy. The guy's looking for a job. Wasn't a personal thing. Excuse me. As a matter of fact, I have a report here, right here. We, the tax agents were charged, $9,000. I'm not going to read it. I'm just showing that I have it.
Don't, don't even bring it up.
Okay. I want to let you know that we did our due diligence. We have other information that you people don't have, unaware of. We've been asked not to make it public. And that's where it stands. That's the reason we haven't asked some of the questions.
That, 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 Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry. This is inappropriate. That, that report was not an investigation on me. And it was not a question of whether I'm competent or capable of holding the town manager position. You've now basically threw in some cloud of I don't know what out there now. I, I, I'm just disgusted by what's taking place. I can't believe this. I, I mean, think about what has just happened now. What you basically implied is this board has done a secret investigation that can't be released.
I didn't say it was a secret.
It undermines my ability to perform ethically and professionally as a town manager.
Well, I didn't say you, you did anything, you didn't do anything secretly. You were there when we, we said, you were part of the, you agreed to go along for us to hire our own man.
And, and, and let's talk about it, George. If you want to go back to that report, we had that report delivered in, in a verbal form. And it was just, and that was the end of the matter. And they're.
It was supposed to be the way it was, Paul. It was supposed to be a report from the beginning.
Ken, can you please stop this?
That is not, that is not. That is not what took place.
All right.
Five of these board, four of these board members were there. It was a verbal report because the, the presenter was, was not comfortable delivering a report on the whole question of the matter regarding the police sergeants matter with JLMC. That's what that was. And, and, and that report was delivered verbally and that was the end of the matter. And then I learned in an executive session, it's somehow thrown across the table at me that Mr. Dixon took it upon himself to, who wasn't contact person for the board, it was Pat Lojus as the vice chair at the time, to contact this gentleman and, and get this report. And you can tell by the preference of his report that he's upset that he's being bothered again. And, and it's not even a report. It's, it's a, I don't know what to describe it, other than I don't accept it and, and, and it would bother me if the board accepted that as what you paid $9,000 for.
We kind of three to one vote to, to, to ask him to give.
All right. So George, George, we got to stop this because, you know, that was.
Fine. No problem.
Any other comments from the other board members? Emily, Virginia, nothing?
I, my personal position has not changed. I think that trying to plan for a transition. trying to plan for a transition is a prudent thing to do. Again, I would like to have council part of this discussion.
Okay, Emily?
I think that this was not structured. I think that the fact that that stupid letter was ever allowed to be read, ample time was given to not read it. But we chose to read a 1:00 AM email into the record from somebody who has no clue what they're talking about.
Well, Emily, don't forget that was at the request of someone else.
Yeah, who insisted. I, I just, I mean, like, I can't even. So listen. The vote was to not renew the contract. As best I understand it, that is a vote that we can take. So given the entire picture, we voted to not renew the contract. We had a discussion, we tried to move on to other things. I really, I mean, why don't we structure a discussion, put it on the table, let everyone have their say, and then repeat themselves, and then complain that we're lying to them, and complain that they're backroom shenanigans, which is ridiculous. But, you know, let's, let's, let's have, let's have the complaint session. Let's take time out of our lives during a pandemic to have a complaint session. I, you know, let's, let's do it. So let's all schedule something. Or we can tell people to just stop. The decision was to not renew. There is no need to give a reason for not renewing, so.
Emily, in the end, the decision was to renew.
For one year.
We took a-
In order to give everyone time to have some overlap.
I, I agree with what you're saying, and what I can say to the whole thing is, you know, and to everybody that's sort of chiming in, there's really five or six people in the chat box that are really asking a lot of questions and making comments. And for their sake, I mean, if they want us to have another session, will we make everything totally transparent? I would totally understand. And I would start off by saying, you know, last year was the first year for me as a chairman. You know, you come into this board. I have not obviously been involved in a lot of this stuff prior to being on the board of selectmen. You would think that there would be, you know, some type of a mentoring program, you know, you have senior people on the board, and then you should take the younger ones or the newer people under the wing and sort of give guidance. I also reached out to a lot of people in town and asked, you know, not anything in detail, but, you know, how to, what's the procedure here, or the procedure there? And, you know, did I make mistakes in the whole process? I'm sure I did. And, you know, if you want to air the whole thing out for the, for the five or six people that are in the chat box dinging away, I'd be more than happy to. People who know me, you call my cell phone, I return a call within two hours. If you have any questions, I answer your questions. If you want to sit down with me, I buy the coffee. I don't think in three and a half years you'll find anybody that would deny that they reached out to me, and I didn't give them all the time they wanted to sit and talk to me and ask me questions. I've been nothing but transparent. And I find it, you know, I, I'm sorry, I take it personally when someone tells me that I have backroom shenanigans going on. In three and a half years, I think I spoke to Bill Harvey twice outside of town, and one was my first three months in the position, and the second time was probably about a year ago. My cell phone number's on the website, so does that mean that, you know, you know, people can text me with comments and things like that? Sure, do I answer them? I don't. If someone calls me and has a question, I'm happy to call them back and answer their question. So to be, you know, accused of being backroom shenanigans or not transparent is totally, in my opinion, inappropriate. And I would say anybody who knows me well could pretty much vouch for me in that area. It's up to you guys. If you want to have a meeting, will we go through this? And I think, you know,
Oh, how do you feel about it?
It's your call, Paul. I mean, I've sort of asked you, and you can, you please admit to this if you agree with me. I've asked you along the way what you want to do just about in every situation, and let you tell me your opinion on this stuff. So whatever you want to do is, you know, weighs on my decision.
I mean, so what are we gonna do? We're gonna go through meeting by meeting, minutes by minutes of what really transpired? As opposed, I mean, what is, what is it that you'd like to do with this? You know, what, I mean, I have my opinions, you have your opinions, it's been, what? Five months since January, and then the month since then. I mean, if, if, if you think it's best for the community, I'll, I'll go along with it. I, again, I guess-
I don't really think it is best.
Well, then, then don't do it, if you don't think it's best.
I also think that, you know-
Certainly helps me.
I also don't think that a representational sample is being given here. It's a certain amount of echo chamber and bubbling going on, and having heard a very wide range of perspectives on it, I just, I really think that there are more important things to discuss.
I, I guess to come back to the point at hand, the, the agenda item was the town manager search committee. I don't understand, again, if the vote taken in March, and we'll take the vote verbatim, was that my contract doesn't expire until June of 2021, and at that time, the board will take a vote whether to renew that contract. That's what the language of the vote says. I didn't make that motion, you did, and it was voted three to two. And, and I'm just taking that at face value. So in terms of forming a search committee, how do you form a search committee when you don't know when the process will initiate? Or which board of selectmen is going to be in place to form that search committee? And that's what, because what if my, what if, what if something happens, you know, before or after the town election? That's gonna determine who's on that search committee and what that, and the search committee will then decide how they're going to proceed. Assuming that the, that if I'm, that if I'm here in June of 2021, the board doesn't extend my agreement. I mean, I'm just taking it as to what it is and what was done. I mean, you know, I, I-
So my response to that, Paul, is we were, we were well into the pandemic when you made that offer to the board about-
No, 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 no.
No, we weren't, Ken.
We were in the pandemic.
No, 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 we were not. The pandemic started after March 5th. The pandemic, we-
When did we, when did- When was the, when was the offer that you made to, to have a job by October?
That goes back to January. That's into January minutes.
No, that had to be in March.
That was in March, Paul.
It's in March, okay, it was in March. It was, it, in March, okay, it was in March, but it was before the pandemic.
Oh, it was before the pandemic. I guess it was before we understood what the pandemic was gonna be.
It wasn't before the pandemic.
Yeah.
It was, it was before the shutdown.
Before the shutdown, and before anybody knew what we were dealing with.
Correct, okay.
And therefore, we didn't expect there'd be a shutdown, the town meetings would be delayed or postponed. None of this was foreseen. So yes, you can say the pandemic may have started in February or early March, but clearly, there was no comprehension by any of us what we were heading into. And-
I agree.
And-
All right, so just to cover the agenda item, anybody comments on establishing a search committee?
I think it's premature.
So that's a no?
I, I would like to have this discussion with council present. I, I, because I, I think there's merit to planning ahead.
Emily, are you done, Virginia? Sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm done. I was gonna address some of the things flying by in the chat, but-
I don't think that's-
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Emily, your thoughts?
I think it would be good to talk to Labor Council, too. Or at least have Labor Council present.
George?
I think you can talk to Labor Council, you can make your own decision. I'll bring her back.
No, I'm saying, bring, 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 bring him bring him or her to the meeting.
Executive session?
You want Paul, Paul Haverly or Labor Council?
Labor Council who's been
Okay.
Guiding this.
All right, I will-
That's my suggestion, unless you think it-
No, I was thinking the same thing.
Okay.
Is that fair, Emily?
Sure. I don't really want any more executive sessions, though. I think we should just have everything right out, everything. Let's see how that goes over.
I don't think that qualifies for executive session, just to have the decided-
I know, no, I mean, I just, like, in general, you know, if we're gonna get this ridiculous rumor mill, and we're gonna have leaks anyway from God knows where, you might as well just have it all out in the open.
All right, so with that, we'll if Tony say something? Okay, so with that, we'll put it on another agenda item and ask Labor Council to be present. All right, that will bring us to committee vacancies.
Okay. Committee vacancies. Our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has two openings. The Board of Appeals has one vacancy. The CCA Advisory Committee has three vacancies. The Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee has two vacancies. The Commission on Disabilities has two vacancies. The Community Action Program Committee has one vacancy. The Community Preservation Fund Committee has one vacancy. The Council on Aging has five. The Energy Conservation Committee has three vacancies. The Historic District Commission has one vacancy. The Holiday Decorating Committee has one vacancy. The Middlesex Canal Commission has two vacancies. The Parade Committee is welcoming all applicants. The Permanent Building Committee has one vacancy. The Personnel Board has one vacancy. The Public Celebrations Committee has five vacancies. The Recycling Committee has three vacancies. The Roberts Field Advisory Committee has one vacancy. The Tree Committee has three vacancies, and the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee has two vacancies. If you are interested in serving on a town board or committee, please complete an application available on the town website or contact the town manager's office at 978-250-5202.
Okay, thank you, Virginia. Public hearing, we'll start that with a transfer for the all alcohol beverage package store license for Vinyl Square Holding LLC, DBA Vinyl Square Craft Beer House and Premium Liquors to Bishot Noon, DBA Chelmsford Wine and Spirits, live in Vinyl Square. David, or let's get you unmuted. There you go.
Good evening. Thank you to the board. I appreciate being here tonight. I represent V South Nguyen, who is the applicant looking to, seeking your approval for the transfer of the license from Vinyl Square Holdings LLC. I don't know what the protocol is, but V is, V is here. And just a little bit about V South, also known as V, is he is a 10-year resident of Chelmsford, actually lives in North Chelmsford. Currently, at this time, he is the holder of two licenses. He has a Burlington Wine and Spirits, to which he has had the store successfully for 20 years. And he's also the current licensed holder of Westford Wine and Spirits over the last eight years. V, I think, right now, live with respect to the application that we're applying for, I think you're about a mile, maybe V's actually about a mile from the existing facility. And we would be happy to answer any of the questions that any board members would have. And if not, we would appreciate the board taking the opportunity to review our application and approve the transfer.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just, just for the background information, are the current owners selling, or?
They're selling the application. They're selling the license, that is correct.
Okay, and are they selling the store, too, or?
The, the equipment and the contents of the store, right.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a few questions. I, I know it says that V owns several, owns two other package stores. Which, which is the one in Westford that's his?
Would you, would you, that's Westford Wine and Spirits. It's at the Cornerstone Mall.
Could, could we turn the video on of the people that are here with you, please?
Happy to do that. I apologize. I want to try to judge, balance this so everyone can see. This is, this is V?
Right, and I saw, I saw Mr. Reddy and Mr. Pantuso.
I, they're not, they are not with me, no.
I know, I'm asking if I can turn that video on. Thank you.
Kenny, there's Kenny Pantuso.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have questions for them? You want their microphone?
No, I just, if people are here for a topic, I'd like to be able to see who's here. I'm sorry, Mr. Kiel, go ahead and-
No, no apologies necessary. It's, I, I want to comply with your protocol, so I'll be happy to put anybody on the camera that you'd like us to put.
Okay, I had a couple more questions. I noticed in the, in the application, you indicate that V that you're gonna be at this location 80 hours a week?
Well, as the manager, yes.
Okay, so that means you won't spend any time at your other locations, or how's that gonna work?
Megan Ford.
V's a workaholic. We may, we may have put the wrong amount of hours there, but the emphasis is, is V simply runs the stores. If you've ever been to one of his stores, his presence is always there, and he most certainly gets to know all of his customers by name usually.
Okay, but he will have a qualified, certified staff, I'm assuming, to back him up?
Without question, without question, yes.
Okay. Also, I noticed in the purchase asset agreement, one of the conditions is a signed purchase and sale agreement for 133 Princeton Street. Can you kind of explain what the purpose of that is?
No, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. About a tenth of a mile down the road, 133, 133 Princeton Street is about a tenth of a mile down the road. We're looking into that right now. That is, I would suggest, a blighted building. We're looking into the possibility of purchasing that particular property after we are able to obtain the license itself and completely renovating it and establishing a new store, which we think would, may do wonders for that particular stretch of road.
So you would then transfer this license to that location?
We would move, we would move the license to that location about a tenth of a mile down the road.
I know where it is, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so that's kind of your, your, not long-range plan, but not your immediate plan.
It's, it's a vision, without question. It's a long-term vision, short, short, short-term and long-term, without question.
Okay, so I know the dates have kind of passed. Have, have you signed a purchase and sale for that property?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
There, there are contingencies everywhere on the purchase of that property, you know, applications, the engineering, the ability to put a building there that we would like to hopefully make work for the town of Chelmsford. So there are just many, many contingencies, but we are under agreement. That is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I don't have any.
Is that particular property or Vinyl Square Craft Beer and Wine right now, is that a lease, or is that something that V is buying to own?
The person that we are purchasing the license from owns the building. We would be leasing the facility from the owner of the building.
Okay.
I have no questions, George. You have anything else?
No, it's fine.
Virginia?
My, my question is more for the board. Is this the type of thing that we have to hold up until the next meeting?
Well, first of all, it is a public hearing.
Oh, sure.
We're gonna have to, we'll have comment and close the public hearing.
Okay.
It is, it's our understanding that this was going to be open for two weeks, and it's the of the precedent of the board, that if the person seeking the application is in the business and has licenses, that our attendance may not be required at the next hearing. Is, is that correct? Or we could ask that our attendance not be- Is that correct? Or we could ask that our attendance not be necessary? Or would you like us to attend that meeting?
I think our tradition is to leave it open for two weeks. Do you need to be at the next meeting? I would say you don't have to be, but if someone does raise a concern at the next meeting, you may wanna be here to discuss that. You run the risk of not being here if someone raises a concern to defend yourself.
We most certainly will be here to answer any questions from any member of the public.
Right, yeah, yeah. If somebody did raise a question at the second meeting, then we probably, we'd have to continue it again after that.
We'll be here.
Close the public hearing.
Well, we're leaving it open.
Continue.
Until, does anybody, is there anybody from the public to make a comment today?
I don't see anybody in the chat.
Okay. I make a motion then to extend the public hearing to our next regular meeting on August 31st.
Second.
Pat, is that okay?
Yeah, it's really, yeah, officially continue the public hearing, yeah. Not extended.
Alright, two of the motions and a second. All in favor by roll call, Pat?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
Sorry, went on the wrong, George?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, so see you folks at the next meeting.
Thank you all for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, that will bring us to reports and presentations. So we have Stephanie Cronin and Robert Buckley, Middlesex Three Coalition update.
Thank you, and good evening and thank you for your time this evening. I'm Stephanie Cronin. I'm the Executive Director of the Middlesex Three Coalition and I'm joined by Bob Buckley, the Senior Partner at Reemer Bronstein and Vice President of the Middlesex Three Coalition. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we're also joined by the President of the Middlesex Three Coalition, Paul Cohen, who has been critical in our success and has helped to establish the coalition many years ago. I know many of you and thank you for coming to past Middlesex Three meetings and for being engaged. For those of you who don't know the coalition, I'd want to just give you a brief background of the coalition and our roles and update the board on the work that we've done and the focus and how it's changed over the last six months. Does that work for you? So the Middlesex Three Coalition, we're a public-private partnership. We're a regional economic development organization. We represent 10 municipalities along the Route 3 Quarter, including of course Chelmsford, as well as down south Burlington, Lexington, goes up to Lowell, Westford, Tingsborough. And we have about 120 business members, including some of the larger members, the larger businesses in the region. And our role is to help address those business development concerns that are difficult for one community or one company to address on their own, such as transportation, workforce development, real estate development and infrastructure improvements. None of these are easy issues, but the thought is by bringing the public and private sector together, we move those issues forward. So over the last six months, like everyone else, we've been meeting remotely. And this includes bringing our municipal economic developers from our 10 communities together, along with our chambers, our mass hire, the hospitals, colleges, other resources. We've been meeting weekly or every other week to share concerns, ideas, best practices, how to help restaurants, permitting ideas, grants, programs. The idea is that especially in these times, we need to be collaborating to make this region and our businesses stronger. So besides these economic development subcommittees, we have subcommittees on workforce development, transportation, real estate and infrastructure. And they bring together the stakeholders, the municipalities, the businesses, the educational institutions to discuss the needs, the concerns, grants, best practices to improve the region. So in addition to these types of meetings, we also have larger meetings with Business Leadership Series where we highlight our target areas. So for example, we have a meeting on September 17th on the future of life sciences and workforce development with Mass Bio. And the idea with that is we bring our larger life science companies and our educational institutions together, discuss workforce needs today, over the next five to 10 years, to make certain that we have the workforce in place to keep this industry growing in the region. We also have meetings such as Transportation of Massachusetts Economic and Employment Outlooks. We've been holding monthly meetings on what's happening in Middlesex Three, where we highlight communities and companies and projects happening in the region. And it's a way to open up the doors and let people, companies, know what's happening at DCU or iRobot or Cronos or the town of Chelmsford. So we had our first virtual meeting on what's happening in Chelmsford. And I have to tell you, this was our third what's happening in Chelmsford meeting. And every time we do a what's happening in Chelmsford meeting, it's larger than any other meeting that we had that year. And the point is that there's a lot of interest in what's going on in Chelmsford from outside the region. And we have a number of events with real estate events throughout the year. Besides, we have a yearly event with the New England Real Estate Journal. We also have monthly events with real estate spotlights, which will focus on different markets from housing to life sciences, office, retail, restaurants. And it talks about not only how are those industries changing, but really what are other communities doing who are learning from our neighbors as well too? For example Burlington, they just did a major permitting revision to encourage more life science companies. So that's something that they're looking at doing and maybe this might be a good time to turn it over to Bob Buckley, because I know he's worked a lot in the life science area as well too and with permitting. But before I turn it over, the three points that I really wanna make is, one, Chelmsford has a great representation. And I'm saying that not just because Paul is the president of Middlesex Three, but Chelmsford's involved. You guys are at the table, you're at the meetings with the other, with the other communities, whether it's Lisa Maroney, Evan Balansky, Paul Cohen. You guys have a great team and you're highly regarded inside the region and outside the region. The second point is, if you've never been to a Middlesex Three meeting, I encourage you to attend. If you're an elected official or a staff member of Chelmsford, you're part of the coalition because the town's part of the coalition. So we hope you can attend some future events as well too and get involved and hear what other communities are doing. And number three, for anyone out there, you know, one thing with Zoom is it does make it easier to record meetings. So if you can't attend any of our meetings, we do have them on YouTube. So please check it out as far as what we've been doing on our website, on YouTube. But what I'd love to know is also, I'd love to hear your feedback, whether it's tonight if time allows or at your convenience. But I'd love to hear more from you as far as regional development and the work we're doing at the coalition and how we can better support the work that's going on in Chelmsford. So with that, I just wanted to give you an update of what we've been doing, but I'd like to hand it over to Bob Buckley, talk a little bit more from the private sector.
Thank you Stephanie. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Robert Buckley, Reemer Bronstein. I run the land use planning department at Reemer and been doing it 30 some odd years. And as a matter of fact, I actually permitted the first Cronos building in Chelmsford years ago. Some of my projects have been the former Sun Microsystems, Third Avenue and Burlington, Leahy Clinic. But about 10 years ago, we were approached by the then governor to look at coordinating the talent along the Middlesex Corridor, the Route 3 Corridor. And we put together, I think, a very innovative and creative and vibrant organization, Middlesex Three, which allows economic development to move forward intelligently. And by that I mean that the developers know what the communities are, what they're thinking, what their needs are. They get, they get access to the thought leaders in the community. On the same, on the other side of the ledge, I would hope that the private sector is able to impart on the government sector what users are thinking about. I mean, I've been lately, when I've been interviewed, I've said, you know, in the last 100 days, we've turned the model upside down in terms of how we conduct business. And I don't know if we're going back to the old ways. So those communities that share ideas, know what the trends are, where we're going, and there's a good, meaningful dialogue, I think is beneficial to everyone concerned. And as Stephanie indicated, we're focused on what I hear clients talk about as major issues. What's the quality of our biggest asset, which is our personnel, so workforce training, location, transportation, all of the issues that will determine where and how someone prospers and create jobs. And it's a, it's a very vibrant exchange. Paul has been involved, I think, since the inception or shortly thereafter. After we started, I think Bernie Lynch was initially involved. And it's been, Paul's been a vital cog in the system. He's put together a tremendous staff. And whether you know it or not, Chelmsford is a very hot commodity in the marketplace right now. Your 129 corridor is being looked at by a lot of people as a vibrant corridor that has access to a major university, quality of life. And it's between your staff, between Evan and Lisa. It's been a very informative discussion. I think that you're gonna see over the next five years that Chelmsford is going to become a magnet for the high-end economic development, which I think you're gonna see along our. There's been tremendous exchange of ideas and it's in my 30 some odd years of practice, it's probably the only thing that I've been involved with that I really feel when I walk out of a meeting that I've learned a lot and I hope I've given a lot, but can't say enough good things about it. And that's why I'm so active in it. Needless and I have a lot of other things I can, that compete for my time, but I've enjoyed the professional staff, particularly in Chelmsford because there's continuity there and, you know, I'm very optimistic about your future. Take any questions here?
That's great, thank you. So does the board have any questions for the Middlesex Three?
I'll just make a comment. I joined Middlesex Three before I was a selectman. And so I've been with it for at least a couple of years. And I just wanna say Stephanie and Robert, I wanna echo, I think that with a very small staff, you guys have done an incredible job of helping to facilitate the conversation along the Route 3 Corridor and really getting some initiatives in place, like the transportation and the workforce development that have made and are going to make a big difference. So thank you.
Good night. Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment to that? If you work for me, you'd hear me say this all the time. Everything is interrelated. Everything is interrelated and the competition among communities is no longer the, it's no longer the address that dictates where a user or development occurs. It's, you know, it's the certainty, it's the, it's what does this community have to offer in terms of access to talent, which is critical in the Middlesex, the Route 3 Corridor. If you go 10 miles on either side, has the highest concentration of technical talent probably in the state. And it's just been a very rewarding experience. I've met a lot of very, very, very talented people. Not all of them have the same view of the world, but that's okay, as long as there's a discussion. I think the product coming out is to everyone's benefit. The name of the game right now is create jobs, good, stable jobs.
And I just wanna thank Virginia for those comments. And also I feel that the concerns, the challenges are changing over, and have changed over the last few months. Transportation used to be the number one concern that we heard from the business community. I don't think that's gone away, but certainly it's lessened. Workforce development certainly is a much bigger issue. Broadband access, obviously you guys are dealing with that from your, for your schools. We see it with the businesses. It's gonna become more of an issue. So there are definitely a lot of issues and I give Chelmsford a lot of credit. You are keeping ahead of these issues as well too, with a lot of the outreach that you're doing. Bob, I will correct you with one thing, that not only was Paul involved with Coalition from the beginning, he came up with the name for the Coalition as well. Just, just a little bit of trivia, but that's, but thank you for your time tonight. And if you have any feedback, I'd love to hear it either now or at a later time.
Well, I don't, does anybody else have any comments for the, for a guest?
Yeah, I'll just comment, I missed the meetings that, you know, I missed going to the breakfast meetings you always had. I would always, you know, meet somebody that I'd never spoken to before and learn all kinds of new things. So I really do miss that and hoping that you can, you know, get those back going sometime in the next few months, maybe.
You and I both.
And, and as far as, you know, even as far as the high-speed internet you were just talking about, I think that applies even to these, these meetings. I'm having a few, you know, glitches here and there. And, and lastly, to go back to when you first started, I, you know, I remember being at some of those first meetings 10, 12 years ago. And I don't think anybody would have anticipated the achievements that you have made and, you know, in that time and all the assistance that you have provided to all the communities along through the 3 Corridor. So kudos to you guys for everything you've done.
Well, thank you. And please come to our virtual networking. I know it's not the same, but we try to continue the conversation because we've got to continue to build the relationships and make the connections and let people know what's going on in the different communities. So I encourage you to come and just participate in that. You have to bring your own coffee though.
Okay.
And things are gonna change dramatically as we've seen in the last 100 days. So those communities that exchange ideas, what I call thought leaders, and can try to envision the future will succeed. And when they succeed, it's to everyone's benefit.
I'm wondering if there's any thought into how to get broadband and high-speed internet as a utility. One of the biggest complaints I'm seeing right now is the cost. And I see people who have access to, you know, mass save heat loans, who have reduced energy rates because of financial hardship. But the thing that they're missing is the broadband and that functioning as a utility, because it is essential and has been for decades now, but we're a little bit behind that curve.
I didn't agree with you more.
Worldwide, so I'm wondering if there's any way we can, well, pressure on the legislature to actually.
Well, it's funny you bring that up because I know that at our executive meeting, and Paul can attest to this. And we also recently had a discussion with Senator Markey where we said, we know that there is going to be an infrastructure bill coming out of Washington.
Right.
And why don't we look at the definition of infrastructure? Is it bridges and roads? You know, I know you're all gonna disagree me when I say this, that traffic is taking care of itself because, you know, I'm a partner in a law firm of 100 and some odd lawyers. And on any given day now, we might have 10 in the office. And I think that's the future because the importance of the internet, as I pointed out to the senator, was that if this was 15 or 20 years ago, we wouldn't be doing this. We wouldn't be productive. So if we're gonna look at infrastructure, maybe the definition of infrastructure is, is the broadband and the stability of it. And where we, where we see a big growth in the Chelmsford area because of the university nearby is cybersecurity. You know, when we start having more and more people working from home and dealing with confidential information, what's the security? So to your point, and you're right on, the issue that we've been focusing on is maybe we should define infrastructure differently. You know, if we're investing a dollar in a bridge, is that dollar better spent in broadband or the robust nature of the internet?
I would push back and say it's not an either or, but an and.
Right, no, I agree with that.
And we have the money to do it. We just have to choose to appropriate it and raise it.
See, these are the types of.
Sensibly, we'd have.
These are the discussions we have on an ongoing basis. And from that turmoil of discussion, hopefully comes solutions. And I agree with you, I, you know, we haven't been allocating money properly over the last 30 or 40 years. But now we're gonna be forced to, be it life sciences. And by the way, Chelmsford is well positioned to take advantage of that. If it's infrastructure on cybersecurity or, you know, the other high-tech advanced manufacturing, there are a lot of things happening that are not traditional. And while we all want to go back to whatever normal was, there's gonna be fundamental changes. And the more we discuss it, the more. And the more we discuss it, the more we hear what municipalities are hearing, the more you hear what the private sector is hearing and what their, their needs are. I think the solution can oftentimes be better. Not perfect, but better. I could go on forever. Thank you.
So Robert, you step me out. I'll tell you, I've been to several of your meetings in person. And I kind of reiterate what Pat said. I've always met somebody new. I had great conversations, learned something that I hadn't considered, especially in the economic development realm. And it's always been a fantastic, well, well-presented meeting. We host them are always great. There's always plenty of coffee and keep the attention, so.
And we have, and we have the ear of Boston, the legislature. And, and we have some, we have some success behind us now. So when we speak, people do listen. And I have to call, I mean, I will tell you, you have a tremendous economic development staff in, in Chelmsford. I'm involved or my firm's involved with the 129 project with the restaurant there. And the guidance and the input has been tremendous.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming and have a great night. Stay safe.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
All right. And so with that, we'll go to the Assistant TPW Director Steve Yonley and Town Engineer Christina Papadopoulos to talk to us about Boston Road and Concord Road easements.
Hi, good evening. This is Christina Papadopoulos, Town Engineer. I'm here with Steve Yonley, the Assistant Director of Public Works. So several years ago, we started working with Mass DOT on an intersection improvement project for Boston and Concord Road. We hired a consulting firm to analyze the traffic and design a solution to improve safety. The study found that the intersection does not warrant a signal, however, could be improved by reconfiguring each of the street intersections. Under the project, conduit will be installed for any future signals. Part of the necessary improvements include replacement of the culvert under Boston and Concord Road and under the Triangle Repair Shop. In order to accommodate additional sidewalks, drainage improvements, sign and roadway improvements, easements along the roadway are necessary. Through DOT's process of easement taking, we had town council perform title exams on all the affected properties. And next, we had them all appraised and reviewed by an outside appraiser. We made the property owners aware of the process and made the engineering staff available to answer any questions they had. The damages generated for the takings of the easements are listed in the table that we provided you. These easements include some permanent easements, some temporary, and some layout modification. The two areas of fee-taking are due to headwall and sidewalk. And tonight, we're asking that you vote to endorse the order of taking for the easements for the Boston and Concord Road as shown on the plan. And Steve and I are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
What kind of feedback did you get from the residents that you notified?
So what I had, well, I can't speak for Steve, but mostly they just wanted to, us to explain to them what was happening in front of their property, how it was going to get altered, and whether it was going to be a permanent easement or a temporary easement, and why we needed the easement and, and how long we could potentially be there for. And the answer is it's a three-year temporary easement. So it's really just for the purpose of, the temporary ones are for the purpose of construction. Because, you know, you can't just build within a certain square footage. You need to have some extra room to move your equipment around, move some dirt around and grading.
Thank you.
Christina, would it help if I shared the Excel spreadsheet of the cost for those easements?
If that's important, sure, you can.
That's up to you if you want it up there. I just, you had referred to it and people at home or people watching the meeting may not be able to see it. So I'll just do a quick screen share here.
Sure.
And just make sure I got that right. Does that look right to everybody? So it's about $36,000 is the cost for all of it?
Correct.
I, I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else on the board does. Okay. And we want to go to the next item?
I think we need a vote on that.
Yeah, I think we need a vote.
Sorry.
Is that the, is the vote that you need on the next item, which is the traffic control agreement?
No, we need, I don't know how many votes, but I need one vote for the order of taking. And then the, I think the other two are separate votes. Yeah, so we need three, three separate votes. Steve will speak about the other two items. But the, the order of taking for the easements is the first one up. As long as you agree with it and don't have any other questions, then you can.
I'll make a motion to approve the order of taking for the Boston Road and Concord Road easements as presented.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Now, go to you, Steve. Yep, thanks Christina. Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yep, so I think next is the, the traffic control agreement with Mass DOT. If my memory is correct with the agenda. What that is, standard document from DOT with a project in the, in the tip program. And it's just language that states that we agree to adhere to all the necessary signage as part of the project that DOT installs, which is the, the driver for the next item. I believe the, the turnout of Packer Road.
So do you need a vote on this? Or is there, this, there's no board signatures or anything on that document?
This one, I don't believe we do. It's signed by the manager. It's the, the next item, which is the turn restriction that needs the board's vote.
So do you, do you want to go to the next item then? Does anybody have any questions? Steve, why don't we go to the next item?
Yep. And the next one should be the no left turn at the end of Packer Road at Concord Road. For the DOT plans, they indicate that we need to restrict that to a right turn only due to its proximity to the main intersection there of Concord and Boston. This was presented at the 25% design hearing, which is a public hearing done with these projects. That was maybe a year and a half ago. This has been vetted through of all of DOT's approval processes through the consulting engineer that we hired, runs through all the necessary people at Mass DOT for approval. They've signed off on it all at this point. So it's just the request to the board to endorse the no-left turn exiting Packer Road onto Concord.
So Ken, could you show the first picture in the registry plans? I'm just trying to. Well, any of them, but the first one is the easiest one to see.
Give me one second.
And while he's doing that, Steve, I was just, I'm trying to visualize if they can't take a left turn, how do they take that direction on Concord Road? Is there somewhere else they can easily turn around or?
So what all the discussion was that night at the, at the design hearing and then some comments that were made after the fact to the public. And then a lot of back and forth with us and the design team and the folks at Mass DOT was if the people coming out of Packer Road were forced to go right, they can then continue down, take a left on, on Harvey Road, come up and over, and that gets you right to Boston Road. Seemed like that was the lesser of all evils in looking at all the various designs we had laid out. Obviously, as Christina had, has spoken before with the order of taking, this intersection is being kind of pre-constructed, if, if you will, for a traffic signal. It was very close to hitting all the warrants for a signal, but did not hit them at this time. But we're kind of being a little proactive in that, run conduit and all that. So if a traffic signal is installed, more than likely, we will be able to cycle Packer Road to come out just with some slight reconfiguration of some stop lines on its own signal. But for now, at an unsignaled intersection, it is the opinion of the consultants and Mass DOT that Packer Road, as it enters into Concord Road, be restricted to right turn only.
And I'm sorry, how far, how far down on Concord Road is Harvey Road?
Harvey Road might be a quarter mile.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, do we have a lot of accidents at that intersection?
I don't have the, all the full traffic report here with me. But it, I don't think accidents were one of the things that hit in the signal warrant analysis. There are certainly accidents and some of them have been at high speed. Because if you, if you're familiar with that intersection, people can turn right off of Boston Road onto Concord Road at, you know, any rate of speed you really want to, because it's so wide. That's part of the driver to get this into this, into this program for reconfiguration.
No, I'm familiar with it because the people coming down Parker kind of have to nose out there to see both ways. And there's in the line of speed of the people coming off of Boston onto Concord.
Correct. So there's, there's a lot of, well, it's become the standard almost. You saw it with some of the presentations before Bill Ricker and Rivonick Road, sort of that teeing up of the intersection. This is a similar type of process, but also being, like I said, set up for a potential future signal.
So do you know how far down the road this would be signaled?
It's up to us at that point. We would have to run another warrant analysis on it once the, you know, I mean, assuming traffic comes back to, you know, pre-pandemic levels, I guess. As it seems to be starting to pick up a little bit. But I don't know when it would get back to that point, obviously. But at that point, we'd run another analysis through the traffic counts again. And if it hits, we're one step closer to installing a signal.
Steve, what about? Yeah, Steve, what about Rosemary Lane? Is there any thought to making that a right turn only also?
I, I don't remember any discussion about that. And some of it is, on the design plans, is a small little traffic island. Kind of similar to the end of like Dalton Road at North Road, if you're familiar with that intersection. It's the first one that jumps into my mind. Has small traffic islands right at the intersection. And there's one of those small islands at the end of Concord Road. And how the geometry was lining up at this intersection through the design was the end of Packer Road. The people weren't going to be able to make a left. There was no way we could, we could make that work with, without, you know, with, with keeping that island there. So that's there for traffic control. So people aren't cutting the corner if they're trying to take a left on Concord Road, which isn't a very popular movement. I think a lot of people are taking the left on, on, off of Boston Road onto Concord to zip up Packer more than, you know, continue up Packer. And they'll still be able to do that, obviously. But in order for those people exiting Packer to go left, the extent of that island made that move almost impossible.
Okay, thanks.
I, you know, Steve, I look at this and I try to vision this down the road, what this intersection would look like with lights. And you can sort of see my hand here. You know, I just wonder, is there, is there a way redesign the way Parker comes out? And you guys are the pros, so I'm going to leave it up to you. You're the experts, but I'm not really sure how, when you put a light in here and almost make it a T-intersection, and how you get Rosemary Parker conquered into the T-intersection here, but that'll be interesting.
I think in some of the, the discussions we had with the DOT folks, that island I just spoke of would have to shrink a little bit. And then Packer Road would almost be on its own signal. The people traveling up Concord towards Boston would have to stop short of Packer Road. That way, when Packer would get a green, they, the Packer Road folks would be allowed to exit, you know, on their own cycle.
Sort of like the exit from Brick House?
Yeah, sort of.
Yeah. I mean, I do feel bad saying to the people in Parker, it's right-hand turn only. I understand it's not a huge, because they can also go the other way out to 27, right?
Yeah, and it seemed like when you looked at the, at the traffic numbers, that was obviously done in the preliminary stages of this. So that was like two and a half years ago, three years ago. The majority of that traffic was, was morning peak traffic. You know, it's the cut-through traffic. People are cutting across 27 down Packer Road to miss the center.
And they can still take a right, they just can't go left.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
And they also have, they also have an option, Ken, before they get to, to this intersection, to take a left onto Hog Road, which brings them right out onto Boston Road. If they don't want to, you know, there's, there's other ways to get there.
Yep.
Right, but I don't necessarily want to be flushing people down like Brian and all those streets just so that they don't have to get stuck. But like you said, if the traffic counts are saying it's not that bad. Okay. And like I said, I'm not the expert, so leave it up to you, Steve, and your people. So you need a vote on this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we endorse the left turn prohibition from Parker Road onto Concord Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
Emily? George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thanks you for the work on that one, Steve. And then we're on to the last one, which is the Weston Sampson through capacity report.
Yep, so I believe the board was, sent the report that we received last week from Weston and Sampson in regard, there's actually two items in, in that kind of short report. One is about the overall town capacity. And kind of the second half of the report is more focused on the Katrina Road pump station. We had done a similar type of thing with the Southwell Field Pump Station about a year and a half ago or so. So we thought it was time, in conjunction with the overall town assessment, to also kind of take a good look at Katrina because that obviously is the biggest station we have in terms of flow. So I mean, the gist of this report, I alluded to it a little bit a couple of months ago. I think I just gave the, the board kind of a brief update on where we stood. You know, the gist of it is with projects that have just come online, projects that are under construction and ones that are going through permitting process now, we are more or less, you know, at our capacity number with the city alone. That assumes obviously that Tinsborough will use their 350,000 gallons per day that the sewer commission sold off to them back in the 90s for reasons, I don't know why they would have done that. We could use that capacity now. But, you know, yeah, this chart here obviously, you know, shows that right now, Tinsborough is using about half of their 350,000 gallons per day. But if you've driven up along the river and seen the construction going on, most of that, sewer construction is going to be flow that's going to come through our system. Speaking with the Tinsborough folks, their officials were expecting maybe within the next 18 months, 24 months, they'll probably be at their number as things come online with us. So that will put us more or less right at our 3.01 million gallons per day average. And again, I think I probably said it to the board before, that's averaged out with the IMA, it's over a 365-day period. So it's not like any one given day you average it out. So obviously, with that being said, and the report, as you read through it a little bit, a couple spots recommends that we do not issue any more connections or allow any more connections that will increase flow. Yeah, there's table two here that you have on the screen. That's a list of the projects that have either come online, have been completed recently, or like you see the 50 Hunt Road, the Pine View, and that's over East Chelmsford. Those are actively under construction, buildings are up. You know, connection permits have been pulled. You know, but then you see. Uh, you know, but then you see like the Misty Metal Road and obviously, uh, that's going away with, uh. The Chelmsford Water District acquiring that property. Um, you know, so again, we, we have, uh. The next couple of months will be interesting. I think we have a lot of. Um, questions to ask and, and decisions to make on how we go forward. I think. Uh, later on, when you see the, uh, the draft warrant. Um, I think Town Manager has, has put on their modification or striking some language to the bylaw. That requires you to connect. Any property must connect. But if we don't have capacity, uh, with the city of Lowell and the region. Then how can we knowingly allow people to connect? Um, I know in meetings over the last couple of years with the neighboring towns, we're all kind of up against it and the same. Same thing. Tingsborough is actively looking for more capacity. Drake is actively looking for more capacity. We obviously see the, if you read the report, it's recommended we try to acquire a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand gallons of additional capacity. From the city of Lowell, but obviously there isn't any capacity to attain. That would be the easiest thing to do. But, um, you know, so we have to, we have to, you know. Not only decide on how to move forward with new projects, redevelopment projects. You know, you just heard the Middlesex Three folks talking about the one twenty nine corridor. Those buildings are empty. But they are connected to sewer. You know, my flow numbers are actual flow, real world flow, even with those buildings empty, we're at the number. So, you know, we have to figure out how we're going to handle all, all that, uh, as those start coming in. You know, we, we had, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Chairman, you were at, you know, kind of an informal meeting we had with. Uh, the owners of the Mercury Computer Campus, obviously. Uh, Selectman Wolgers was at, you know, a meeting we had with the West Campus folks, so, you know, you kind of heard. I gave the same speech to the two of them, you know, we, a project and I said it to the board here a couple of months ago at the West Campus. I bring that up intentionally because of the size of that project. Uh, and that not only our local infrastructure couldn't handle it, but then obviously our overall capacity townwide can't handle it. So with that, I guess, uh, you know, listen, any questions? What comments people have and we'll, uh, you know, I'm sure this won't be the, the last discussion on this matter.
Has Lowell applied for additional capacity?
So the city of Lowell, um, and I don't know if I said this last time or not. They, their permit was just, um, had to be renewed, uh, last. Last summer or early in the fall. Uh, their permit allows for thirty two million gallons per day to be, to be run through the plant. They're basically running the plant at capacity, uh, now with what all the flows are that are going. So we all, the, all the, all the towns that are, that are part of the regional wastewater utility, we all wrote comments on the draft permit, you know. Stating that, you know, we, we thought that the flow should be higher, the plant can run higher. It's more or less a paper limit. Um, the approval authorities, EPA and DEP issued the permit. Uh, still with the thirty two million gallon per day limit. Uh, and I believe it wasn't even twenty four hours later, the city of Lowell appealed that permit. Um, in speaking with, with the folks over Lowell Wastewater a few weeks ago, that process is still ongoing. Uh, obviously with the, with the COVID crisis and everything else, some of that stuff kind of got pushed to the side. Um, the only thing we could really do is try to rerate the plant and that's a process, uh, you know. Fully injured, you know, proving that the plant can run more, that takes, you know, it's not something that happens in a month or two. That's something that's. Twelve to eighteen to twenty four months to, to work that process, to prove that the plant could run at a larger capacity. So the city of Lowell folks are working on it, um. You know, maybe here shortly in the next month or so, I can get the regional partners back together and we can, we can try to. Try to make a push, but it's, this certainly isn't something that will happen overnight.
So Steve, if I understand what you said, they have to first get. They, they need to get the appeal for a greater capacity approved and then they have to reconfigure the plan or re.
So.
Or does that happen in parallel under the assumption they're going to get increased capacity?
It could happen in parallel. So what, how this is, is the, the plant over there at Duck Island basically has a limit. Of its capacity on paper. Uh, so they are issued their permit to run at thirty two million gallons a day. We're all fairly well aware that the plant can handle much more of that. Uh, but that's their limit for their permit. So we could start the process while the appeal is going on to rerate the plant, you know, so they could run in parallel with each other.
Does that include the courthouse and everything being hooked up at full capacity and?
I can't speak to how the city of Lowell is.
Oh, yeah, I hear you, but then they're also talking about the Hamilton Canal and everything. I mean, I, I, I'm not. You know, obviously that's your game, so I, I don't know how many gallons that would take if it was, say they put it all together with it. That knock us out of the box with them? I mean, basically, no matter how much additional capacity they were. Uh, they were given.
So i- in the talks, the kind of, you know, informal discussion we had about it, if they, if. We were able to free up, say, three million gallons a day of capacity. It would be divvied up with, with the same percentage as it is now. So everybody gets the, you know, a little additional slice of pie. We more or less, you know, for, for easy math, call it, we get ten percent of the overall flow. So if it freed up. Three million gallons, we would get an additional three hundred thousand gallons.
And getting back to one twenty nine, if you don't mind me asking, on all the buildings that, you know, the, the three hundred, whatever, those three buildings are vacant. You're counting that flow already. I mean, you've, you've, you've apportioned. Full capacity to them, even though they're not being used at the moment, uh, we have to find it if they're filled.
So if, if they, uh, start coming in for full redevelopment or knocking down per the. Per the overlay and going to the five or six story, you know, whatever was approved at town meeting. Uh, I, I am not accounted for any of that flow. My, as I said earlier, in the, the flows shown on the tables in the report are actual, you know, flows. Currently running through our stations with those buildings being empty.
Okay, so you're not counting them for anything right now?
No, I can go back and cor- correct. I can go back and look at historic flows for a two to three story office building. You know, and, and try to figure that in a little bit, what was included in this number was sort of a two percent growth in flow every year. Which I think was in speaking to, to John at Weston and Sampson with some of the driver to kind of indicate, you know, we have to. Maybe reconsider issuing some permits going forward until we get a better idea of what we want to do.
Um. Is it possible that the, uh, treatment plant, while it is being. Uh, we're, we're working on getting it rerated, is there any? Upgrade or renovation that can or needs to be done to help bolster the argument that it can take more?
Well, in the last few years, they have done a lot of, um, done a lot of work over there. As I, as I said earlier, that's some of the, some of the knowledge we have that we know that they can run. I don't want to kind of throw them under the bus either, but you know, it can run over, it can run over the limit a little bit. Um. You know, obviously, they don't want to really run over the limit, because if they get in trouble, we all get in trouble. Or we wouldn't get in trouble yet, because we're not over ours, but. Um. Again, a lot of the, a lot of the process over there has been worked on in the last few years. We see it, because it's part of our. Use charge with Lowell, their capital improvements, we all pay a portion. That's part of the, uh, intermunicipal agreement.
And so, um, Paul or Steve, should the planning board be formally notified? Not to approve projects or have you already done that?
We've shared the report with the Board of Health and the Planning Board, and in fact, and Town Council Paul Haverty, who's on this call. Uh, at this time right now, because the report recommends that the, that, that, um. If you see it on page four, it says, based on the analysis, recommended that no additional permits for connection. Of proposed development to the Chelmsford Municipal Sewer System be approved until such time as additional capacity can be secured. And that is already raising questions, um, to projects that are, you know, and, and I've shared some of that correspondence with you. It, it, over the last few days, since, you know, since the agenda's been published and the report is out there. Um, and, and that's a significant legal issue, because you can't, and, and council can explain it, but you can't pick and choose. You can't say, oh, you can put an addition onto your house, but you can't, you know, and so I, I maybe leave it to Paul Haverty to sort of explain the legal. Challenge, challenges that are here before the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I guess the first thing I wanted to address is the question about whether or not the planning board should not be approving additional projects. Uh, they don't have the authority to deny a project based upon, um, a lack of sewer capacity. Um, if there is an unavailability of sewer capacity, they would have to look at whether or not that project can. Address its wastewater needs through onsite septic treatment facility. Um, either a septic system under Title Five or a wastewater treatment facility, um, which would be approved by the Department of Environmental Protection. Um, I did have the opportunity to take a look at the Chelmsford Town Code. Um, specifically section one thirty two dash two, which is the provision that requires connections to the public sewer. And this is an issue that's come up previously with the Board of Health. They've had a couple of properties that have been on older septic systems. And the question that was being asked at the time was whether or not those properties could be required to connect. Through the sewer system. And the way this provision reads. Um, the requirement to connect to the sewer system is either within one year of being notified by the Sewer Commission. That sewer is available in the streets. Or within thirty days of being notified by the Board of Health, that they've made a determination. That it's in the best interest of the town that a connection be required. Those are the only times when a sewer connection is actually required under the code.
If you don't have a sewer commission.
There isn't a sewer commission, correct. So that's not going to happen. You're not going to get the Sewer Commission to make that determination. It would be the DPW Sewer Division. At this stage of the game. Um, I think that my interpretation of this provision of the code. Is that it, it inherently, it requires that sewer be available. So if we're in a situation where sewer capacity is not available and the town would not allow a connection to the municipal sewer system. Then I don't think that this can be interpreted to prohibit onsite sewer, uh, through a septic system or wastewater treatment. Um, however, there is still the provision in here that says the Board of Health may order a person to connect to the public sewer at any time. If it's deemed to be in the best interest of the town, and I think that will certainly give pause to people who would otherwise be looking to do an onsite sewer system. Um, so there is a need, I think, to address this provision of the code, specifically to eliminate the. Reference to the Sewer Commission, which no longer exists, and to update the language regarding the Board of Health, just to make it clear. That the Board of Health is not required to order a connection to the sewer system simply because capacity may become available in the future. Um, I think that we want it to be in a, in a position where if there is a properly function, functioning onsite system. That that can continue to, uh, exist in that form, in that there wouldn't be a requirement from the Board of Health to order a connection.
So what's the process for updating the code?
Um, Paul can talk to that. I think he's already started the process for putting that onto the town meeting warrants.
We would hope that I have, have it at Fall Town Meeting to amend the code. That town meeting, you know, is, is scheduled, uh, for the third Monday in October. Realistically, you probably get ninety days afterwards for the Attorney General approval. Um, so you're probably looking. Sometime after the first of the year, which the code could be updated. Um, the, and, and again, we'll work over the next couple of weeks with, with the Board of Health and, and Town Council to. Develop the proper language to amend the section of the bylaw. Right now, I have a placeholder to rescind that provision of the bylaw. Uh, but again, the, the big challenge is, is what do we do in the interim or immediately in terms of people who want to connect? Uh, because clearly, additional capacity is going to take quite some time. Uh, whether, you know, in, in any scenario, uh, in, in expense, in, in effort. Uh, and so that, and so we're sort of stuck with the situation of what do you do today? Because it was noted earlier from whether it's UMass Lowell, Riveneck Road, uh, one twenty nine. Uh, or, or again, just a, 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 a simple single family home or in addition to a home. Um, you know, the question becomes, because if we exceed the permitted capacity, there, there's penalties under the agreement with Lowell. Um, to that effect as well.
What are the penalties, Paul?
They, they, they can penalize us, um, you know, as a result of the excess over the permitted limit. Uh, you know, Steve's most familiar with the agreement, but in essence, we don't have the right to send beyond what we're permitted.
Correct. The penalty, uh, section is, is worded very vague, I think, on purpose. Uh, basically, if they get fined for anything, they're passing it along to us. So, you know.
As a, as a percentage of overage or as a total amount?
I think we would be, it, it, there's no numbers discussed in the IMA. Uh, when I get to the office next, I can certainly forward that, the IMA. I don't know if anybody on the board was on the board the last time. IMA came up, uh, but it's, it's basically if we get penalized, we're going to pass the penalties on to you. Or if you're blatantly over, we're going to penalize you, but there's no real. You know, it doesn't say we're going to penalize you a million dollars, you know, or anything like that. It's, it's worded very vague.
So just to be clear, it, I want just, I'm sorry, Virginia, one quick question to Paul. If, if you're going to say. No more sewer capacity for anybody, that includes if I'm going to put a bathroom on my house, right? Like I get no, they, everybody gets no.
Well, the, the flows are calculated by bedroom, so I guess.
Okay.
In, in my, wh- what I would rather see happen is a lot of these larger scale things. You know, we have to come up with a decision to leave room for the people that are trying to add an in-law. You know, we want to have a, people, I guess, the ability to stay in their home. They want to go, you know, they got a ranch in Hitching Post, they want to go up a floor, they want to add an in-law apartment. You want to be able to allow that stuff. You don't want to have to have people that have their home already connected to sewer, have to put a septic system in for an in-law apartment. To me, that seems crazy. So we should.
What you're saying is that if you add a bedroom, there's a problem.
Correct. That's, that's how the sewer use regulations are written. It's calculated by bedroom, which it mimics the flow data based on, on Title Five flow.
So.
Right, Virginia.
Um, Paul and Steve, we, we seem to now be in a very reactionary mode. Um, that's going to have some potentially devastating effects on planned development. If, if you reflect back from your experience, um, with this, is there anything? That we've learned that we can apply going forward, so we don't wind up in this position again, once we've kind of righted the ship?
I, I think what's, what's transformed is the nature of residential development. Uh, if you look at the flows, I mean, going back seventeen, eighteen and so forth to where we are today. Would, you know, you, you, you don't see it happening and then it just happens in seventeen and eighteen. Uh, and it's in the report and it really just reflects the change in residential preference. To these multifamily developments that, that, that Steve can explain. When, when they calculated. The sewer capacity for the town and then made that decision back in the nineties, they allocated all the space in town. No one foresaw this, this rapid escalation and what we have in the permitting process. And in the, uh, uh, you know, in the queue in terms of interest is unprecedented in the town's history and, and, and no one. You know, three to five years ago could have foreseen how this has transformed. I mean, and if you step back and think about it, it's sort of what's happened in Boston too. I mean, this issue is not a Chelmsford and Lowell, you know, exclusive problem. You have the governor talking about housing choice legislation, the housing shortage, we need to construct additional housing and amending the laws of the common law. To allow it to be achieved by a majority vote at town meeting and so forth. But the bottom line is, where's the infrastructure to accommodate this change in residential, uh, living? Um, in, 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 in all of eastern Massachusetts, whether it's water, sewer or both in some communities. I think that's really what's transformed. It, it wasn't for a lack of planning, you know, or, or a lack of, of vision. It was. No one foresaw what has happened, uh, and, and look at Chelmsford. I mean, we were a community without apartments until fairly recently. Now that's all they want to build, you know, and, and you've seen it, Mill Road, uh, Turnpike Road, you know, uh, the center. And now seeing it at, at, requested at UMass West Campus, on Riveneck Road at the former Mercury Computer Site. Um, the, it, it, you know, the developments, you know, and again, those that are already under construction on Hunt Road. You know, and Carlisle Street at the line and so forth. It, it, it's just been, you know, an unprecedented historic transformation of residential dwelling where. The, the concept of single family homes is. the concept of single-family homes is sort of, no longer the preference of either older residents or the younger people, none of which want the responsibility, you know, in general. And so that sort of brings us and others to where we are, because as Steve noted, even in Lowell area, you've got concerns in Drake, at Tingsboro and Lowell. And again, you know, this is not an exclusive problem to to us. And the other issue that's going on and with the Lowell Plan, it's a challenge, is right now they're under the consent order because of the combined sewer overflow into the river. And so it's kind of hard at one point to be dealing with expansion of capacity. At the same time, you've got an environmental concern on the other end about about not having the capacity at the plant to handle the influx of what's coming into the plant during stormy events. I will tell the board, I have reached out to Representative Laurie Trahan's office and Representative Golden to at least bring them aware of this, you know, pressing issue for Chelmsford, again Lowell area, and I think really the region to, you know, because this is going to be a significant challenge to obtain capacity you know, for again, for the needs of the community going forward.
And should we make the other three reps aware as well, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, you know, the, we can certainly do that. You know, and I think once we've got sort of a consensus, they like to sort of know where we want to go. But I think we can do that and make them aware of the issues. And but again, there is no short-term fix.
Right. So if I, if I understand what you said, I think the main point that you made is that we didn't predict the explosion of multifamily housing and some of these other things as the landscape and the environment changed. So when we're now getting ready as Lowell goes through their appeal process and increasing plant capacity over the next twelve to eighteen months, it looked like this report talked about known developments, but is there any way to do any kind of predictive estimate to build in some cushion for what we ask for so we don't find ourselves here again?
Well, I also want to make clear to the board, the solution isn't just the excess permit capacity with the Lowell Plant.
I understand.
One of the challenges, one of the challenges with the location of the Lowell Regional Wastewater Plant is there really is no expansion room at that location. I mean, it's right on the river. It's a tough location. And it's a, you know, I don't know that, I don't, and I know Lowell's been making the appeal efforts because, again, we don't know what their numbers are, but I don't what the solution's going to be in the next twelve or eighteen months. Again, what we do know that we can do is we can, you know, alleviate some of the pressure by eliminating the requirement to tie in sewer because, again, if you were going to construct sewer today in a community, you wouldn't send all the, you wouldn't connect everybody and send all the wastewater out of the community. Now the method is they want you to put the wastewater sewage disposal into the ground so that it can maintain your aquifers and water table. And so, again, that's why the immediate action is, is let's go, let's go to amend the bylaw to contemporary scientific approaches. But also, the issue is, is what do we do now with the issue of sewer connections and flow? And also, the other issue with the sending it to Lowell is the pipe capacity, which the report indicates is not a trivial investment either. And if that can be obtained, as well as the replacement of the pumps. So there's a number of efforts that have to take place in the short, medium, and long term.
So for the, I'm sorry, can I just ask one more question, Ken?
Yep.
So for the developer or the landowner who may have a few acres where they've spent engineering money already to look at plans, what can we tell them is their next step?
That's the question tonight, is what do we tell them? Because there's a difference. It's sort of like when you make a zoning change. You know, generally, the window closes when you advertise a zoning change in terms of, you know, being under the wire. The question is, is what does the town do? Is it a question of those that have already been filed with the planning board? You know, because you said people may have done, and this is what we heard from already from some is, oh, we have plans in process that haven't been submitted to the planning board. How do you handle that situation? Then you've got some such as the amenity restaurant on 129, which, you know, has not been submitted, but it's, you know, we've awarded a grant and work is going on there. But technically, that hasn't come to the planning board yet either. So this is all the challenges that we have. And the problem is, you can't just say, well, if you have a sewer connection, because technically, UMass Lowell West Campus has a sewer connection. Because, you know, they're building that was there, you know, when they were housing juveniles. So you know, it really is a complex issue. And again, that's why when I was pressed for an immediate answer last week about how is the town of the DPW handling this? I said, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. This has to be brought to the Board of Selectmen. We need input from legal counsel. As we noted earlier, the long-term solutions involve the planning board and the Board of Health.
So Paul, to follow up on Virginia's question though, is it fair enough to assume that in six months' time, if a product, if a project that's right now being permitted, they can assume that in six months, we're going to have a solution, whether it be more capacity in the sewer, or they can, they'll be allowed to put in a private septic system?
I think we can go to town meeting and seek the approval to allow an onsite packaged treatment plant or individual septic system and so forth. The challenge is going to be, let's be honest, this is now going to quickly become a development issue. As you know, and that becomes a a big political item, because now it's sort of seen as a regulator on redevelopment or development in the community. And you, and we know, having sat on these boards and worked in the town, that how, what a third rail issue that is in terms of the development of the community. But even if you put that aside, you still have the issue with, as Steve noted earlier, we have vacant spaces on 129 that if they were to re-lease that space under existing permitted uses, which they have a right to do, we will probably go over the capacity of what we have, because he's doing his studies on actual flow, not permitted flow.
So Paul, I'm hearing a lot of the sentences, starting with the problem is, and the challenges are.
Yeah.
What are you telling us the potential solutions are, top three, top four? Like, where do you see this going in nine months from now, six months from now?
I don't, I don't think, aside from a change in the general bylaw that would allow for onsite septic disposal, package treatment plant, or private septic system, I don't think there is any other solution in the next twelve or eighteen or so months. Because I wouldn't hold my breath waiting for Lowell's plant to get additional capacity. The other challenge we have is, we can't invest in our, because our sewer system is so recently constructed, we can't remove inflow into the system, you know, such as what we would have in an older system where we'd have infiltration from stormwater and so forth, from corroded pipes and so forth. So that's.
Is there, is there is there an option to say to, go ahead, sorry?
Right. So that really doesn't allow us to generate capacity inside. And all the other tricks that were done in years past about, we'll go obtain capacity, install low-flow showers and, I mean, that technology change is sort of been beyond us at this point as well, because those opportunities have, one, been exhausted. So the one thought was, you know, well, could you assist Lowell with taking out some of their INI? You know, again, that's a negotiating process, a lengthy process. And we don't know what that cost might be or what, you know, what the viability of that would be. Because obviously, they're looking to the federal government for assistance because of the magnitude of that problem. And so it's not a quick fix of, oh, if you throw a million dollars at it, you can generate X. I mean, and that's what Laurie Trahan's been trying to do for quite some time, is trying to get federal assistance with their combined sewer overflow, because it's such a crippling number that the city can't address it on its own. And certainly not with our help.
Is there an option to say to residents? And just a couple of quick ideas, and you don't have to give me an answer tonight. It can be, we'll look at it and think about it. Where you say, well, resident, like I know in my house, I have two pipes going out of my house, one that takes all the toilets and the other one that takes the sink water and dishwasher. Is there a chance that you could say, hey, break off your gray water? Because they flow two separate pipes out of my house and all the way to the front sewer connection and put back in a gray water tank versus doing the whole system back onto the sewer? And then my second question is.
Just let me answer that. I believe in the late nineties, Title V disallowed a gray water tank like that. So that was some of the driver in town, because all these houses, when they had septic, had the small like septic tank, the leach field, and then the gray water went to like its own separate leach tank. I am ninety-nine percent positive that Title V does not allow those anymore.
Okay. And then my second question is, if there's this growing need long-term for flows and capacity, is there any long-term estimate cost of what it would take to build a treatment plant in Chelmsford that could take flows and then we would have capacity to take from other towns?
You're talking years for permitting, never mind construction.
Yeah, I'm still thinking long-term. I understand. But you just said it, you know, this is a growing trend. It's not a problem that's going to be going away. There is no ed to the flow. We have a lot of our pipes flowing to, you know, these big pump facilities, and I'm just wondering if the infrastructure's there to bring it to a spot, can we, thinking a decade down the road, look at this?
So it's certainly something that could be considered. We would have to be able to acquire a fairly large piece of land. If you've ever seen a small municipal treatment facility that does not discharge to, you know, a river or a larger brook, you know, it's all like sand filtration or whatever. It's going to be set up very similar to the Water District's treatment plant that's down on, off of Crooked Spring. You know, you have a series of filtration devices after the process that's inside and internal to the plant. Just for size, you know, thinking there's one in South Acton that I'm fairly familiar with, because it's on the way to the kids' hockey rink. You know, it's a few acres anyway of just like, you know, fields for the, for the the water after the process to disperse. So, you know, we're talking you know, not just a, you know, a small piece of land, half acre, you'd need probably, you know, a four or five acre parcel at a big enough spot that we could capture enough flow, you know, but cost-wise, I.
See, we have a lot of rivers running through this town. There's no locations on a river anywhere that we could.
Well, that's what Southwell, I think, was originally purchased for way back when, but it's softball fields now. You know, with federal monies to put in a boat ramp and stuff. I mean, I think back in the seventies, when you look at the original wastewater documents from the town, that they acquired Southwell to build their own treatment plant down there.
I don't know if it counts, plants like that.
What was your question, Virginia?
Are there other towns that have treatment plants like the one you're describing?
Oh, Bavaca has a treatment plant.
Yeah, I think there's discharge into the Cockat River, I think. If I'm not mistaken.
And then is there anything from the Title V restrictions that has to be considered in this process?
The only one that I'm aware of is what I spoke of with the gray water discharge. Other than that, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I mean, we, communities like Westford don't have sewers. I mean, Westford has packaged treatment plants, but you know, the Hanover facility in Westford has an onsite packaged treatment plant. They do not have municipal sewer. So it's not undoable. It's just the problem is, what do you do now where, given the state of which Chelmsford is?
So I think from what I'm hearing, Paul, and you know, we have a lot of problems. There are a lot of issues and a lot of complication to this. I think what I'd like to hear at the next meeting is, you know, what are our options? Nine months, six months from now, you know, between now and then, what has to be done? Second, what has to be done, you know, on a one to five-year goal? And then what needs to be done or could be done, you know, longer term? It might take a decade, like put in our own plant. Because I don't know, I'm not really, with the discussions we just had, I'm not clear on what your advice is to us on what to do here. And if you come back and just lay out the options, I would love to hear you know, what those are. And if your choices, there's only one option that can be done in the next six months, then I need to be, I need that piece of information.
Well, again, I, you know, I think the challenge is, is it really does involve dialogue and communication amongst the planning board, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, and others in terms of those type of solutions. I think the immediate question is, what do we do where we have a report now in writing that says we, with what's, what our actual flows are and what's before the planning board, we're at capacity. So what do we do when someone comes into the building department next week or next month and for whatever type of project, you know, seeking approval and connection from the DPW? And again, that's why I invited Paul Haverty here tonight, because that's a legal issue. You know, in terms of the implications of that, in terms of yes or no. And I think that's the pressing issue before us.
I agree a hundred percent, but I'm not, I'm still not clear on what our choices are.
The choices are, do we impose a moratorium or not? You know, until such a additional capacity can be developed.
And what are you recommending?
I am recommending that I have this discussion with the Board of Selectmen and that we have input from Town Council and from the Board of Health and, you know, in terms of how best to proceed, because, for example, if we put a moratorium in and say you have to have onsite septic, that's going to create responsibilities for the Board of Health that they currently don't have today. In terms of, you know, Title V inspections and approvals, and also the question of DPW in terms of, you know, the legal issues of opposing a moratorium and how is that to be applied?
So at their next meeting, can we have a tri-board meeting with the Planning Board and Board of Health?
I think, yes, I think we can invite them and Town Council to discuss what we should do right now. And that would include what we bring to town meeting, you know, in October.
Well, I mean, if that's what you're recommending, that's what I would like to do.
Yep.
Would you like somebody from Western Sampson here too, Paul, maybe to?
Yeah, I think so. You know, Steve can be there. Steve, can you get the author?
I can, I can reach out to John, see if he's available.
So just in terms of background for when people ask about this, part of this is spurred by people looking to maximize their ability to stay on their property. And part of the growth is due to people trying to find places to live. So some of that relates to this being a potential hotspot for jobs in the next couple of decades. Some of that relates to families not being able to afford single-family properties on sprawling lawns or old folks not being able to afford it on their social security pensions. So that's where this is coming from, right? You know, when you're talking about adding in-law apartments or additions for other family members.
I don't necessarily know if I would agree with that statement, Emily, because what I'm hearing a lot about these developments that are going up is you're having a push now, instead of, you know, people saying, I want a two-bedroom apartment with a thousand square feet. Millennials, a lot of them are saying, I'd rather a six-hundred-square-foot one-bedroom. And you're ending up with a lot more units going up. For instance, if you take the project that went at the corner of Princeton and North, which is townhouses, I think almost every one of them is just a single person living in there, but they're all two-bedroom townhouses. But there's only, I think, most of them, eighty percent of them are just single people living in there, but you're counting two bedrooms towards the flow.
You're also seeing a trend where instead of living in the city, Instead of living in the city with transportation now extending outside the city, people want to live. Outside the city. So you're seeing. Um, that the effects of that trend as well.
All right. So are there any more uh, questions or comments before we close this up? So what we'll do is at the next meeting, we'll invite. The other two boards in.
I think you should have a special meeting. I mean, I think it's going to require a lot of time. I don't know about. Steve, uh. Paul thing, but I I mean, I I don't think this is something you're going to. Twenty minutes or so you're going to accomplish. But you got a lot of things to throw around. I don't know. Is that my 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 outface? Uh, Steve of.
I would prefer meetings that are faster than.
I mean, there's a lot of variables in it, so. Uh. It it might, we might be better served having it at a separate.
It's my opinion, but I'm just, I mean, I. It's up to you guys.
All right. Well, I think that's a good point. I'd rather have more meetings.
Happy to accommodate another meeting.
Okay. Uh, is that all right with you, Emily and Pat?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to have a special meeting for it.
Yeah, I feel like this is a much bigger discussion.
All right. So Paul, you'll uh, facilitate that.
Yeah, I mean, I I you, I'm I I don't want to leave tonight without a a target date. I mean. We're talking in the next two weeks. I mean, should we target like Tuesday, September first as as a date or? I mean, I obviously the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health traditionally meet on Mondays and the planning board meets on Wednesdays. I know the planning board is meeting on the twenty sixth, um, which is next week. So I'm perhaps thinking that perhaps Tuesday, September first. Might avoid any conflicts with the, and I know Evan's on the call as well, to avoid any conflicts with the Board of Health or the, um. You know, or the, um, you know, uh, planning board.
I can accommodate the first.
I have nothing else to do with my nights.
Whatever's fine with me. I think if something has to be addressed and the quicker you're going to get it dressed and you get a. Long range plan, a short range plan or whatever.
Okay, sorry. So I'll target it for Tuesday, September first.
That is, that is.
That's an election. That's right. That's election day. So.
How about next Tuesday, the day after town meeting? The twenty fifth.
I'll try. Um, okay, I can try the twenty fifth.
I mean, we, we really have to do it as fast as possible because.
Okay.
You you got a lot going on in one twenty nine. And a lot of people asking a lot of questions and it's kind of, you know, you're embarrassed because it's happening, you know, especially with the effort and the money we spent on one twenty nine. You know, and and bringing in Lisa and everything. I just feel like we're sort of handcuffed her again. Um, so she's going to need answers in order to keep doing her job the way she's been doing it.
Okay, all right. So I'll target Tuesday, August twenty fifth at seven P M. Okay.
All right. So with that, uh, we'll close this out and go to Evan Balansky with the community, uh, with subsidized housing inventory projections.
Good evening. Uh, so with that, let's talk about some more multifamily. Um, I believe this agenda item came up. Um, per your conversation and discussion, uh, with the head over company. Related to the UMass West Campus, and I believe a select board member, um. Asked if we had uh, projections. So what's been presented to you are those projections. Uh, this, uh, these projections date back several years. They've been in front of the Housing Advisory Board. Uh, several times and it's been a working document, uh, that I've been updating, maintaining and updating. So just for some uh, background, between two thousand and two thousand and ten. Uh, approximately seven hundred fifty new housing units, uh, were were built. And those seven hundred fifty were captured in the two thousand and ten census. So for this analysis, that's our starting point. And what this exercise. Yes, yes, it is. So what this exercise goes through is starting, um, current status thirteen thousand, seven hundred forty one. That's our total housing units for the two thousand and ten census. Based upon, uh, ten percent. Um, you would need one thousand, three hundred seventy one. Um, affordable units. So the first section of this analysis is new new units approved for the subsidized housing inventory since the two thousand and ten census. And that first block, which includes, um, the projects located at two seventy one Rivernet, one oh four Turnpike. Seven Gorham, seventy three Dalton, two sixty one Littleton, two seventy six Mill. Sixty one Carlisle, Carlisle and fifty Hunt are all uh, approved via forty B. That totals five hundred and fifty five, uh, units that were approved. Of which five hundred and five units were added to the subsidized housing inventory. So that's that first total line. If you look down, you'll see fourteen thousand, two hundred ninety six. Of which fourteen, fourteen hundred and thirty three, um, are affordable. So based upon the forty Bs that, uh, the town has approved, uh, since two thousand and ten. Assuming, um, all get built, um, we will be at, uh, ten point zero two. Uh, percent affordability. Should also remind the the board and the community that, uh, currently until, um. Until through the end of October, twenty twenty, we are operating under safe harbor certification. Uh, based upon the hundred and sixty eight, uh, units that were approved at one oh four Turnpike. So then moving on in the analysis, uh, there have been, um. Non-subsidized housing inventory units approved over the last decade. So the first line is single family and two family units already built. We've been averaging about twenty six single and and two family dwellings per year for the last ten years. So that first two hundred and thirty four units reflects, uh, twenty six. One and twos over a nine year period, which would bring you from twenty eleven to twenty twenty. Next line, uh, consists of eighty seven new units approved, nothing to do with forty B, but to do with, uh. Uh, planning board zoning permits. These include twenty units at, uh, two forty one Littleton Road. Thirty two units at Cushing Place. Um, eleven units at, uh, one ninety one Princeton, six units at one fifty two Turnpike. Um, and eighteen units at fifty nine dash sixty five, uh, Princeton Street. New units that are currently, uh, in front of the planning board, uh, for consideration. Are a total of forty units, thirty two of which would be part of Gris Mill two and eight units, uh, as part of the Oddfellows redevelopment. So that analysis, uh, adds an additional three hundred sixty one. Um, non-affordable, um, housing units. And as you can see, uh, that new total would bring you up to fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty seven total units. Of which, uh, still fourteen hundred thirty three would remain. Once you count, recalculate, uh, the affordability, that would bring you down to nine point seven eight. Um, percent with a, um. With thirty three, uh, units, uh, needed to reach ten percent. So the next, uh, analysis here, um, brings us to the twenty twenty, uh, projections. Again, carrying the, uh. Just so that that, uh, previous analysis brings us to, uh, to current standards, uh, through twenty twenty. Uh, the next set of analysis, analysis is the the new, um, single and two family for, uh, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Again, these, the two thousand and twenty census won't come out till approximately twenty twenty two. So that's the the carryover of these additional. Uh, two years for single and two family, which is fifty two units. From there, it's very much, uh, projection. So we know that, um, there's approximately four hundred units being. Um, discussed at UMass West Campus. That project, as the void knows, um, has been proposed as a as a lip project of which twenty five percent of the units. Um, uh, would count as as deed restricted. Because it's a rental project, all four hundred units would count towards the subsidized housing inventory. We're also aware of a hundred, approximately a hundred and twenty four unit project at ninety three Brick Hill, and that's right next to, uh, the UP, the UPS facility. That project dates back, uh, several years. Uh, I would say that, uh, recently the the property owners indicated. Uh, that they intend to reconvene that process after October. I'm not sure they're aware of, uh, of your previous agenda item discussion. When they do circle back with us, uh, we will be updating them accordingly. Um. Then there's a variety of other, uh, kind of, uh, potential non, um, forty B projects. We're aware of upwards of two hundred ninety, uh, proposed units at the former Mercury site. At one ninety one through one ninety nine, two oh one Rivernet Road. That's a combination of, um, adaptive reuse on two existing, um, first generation office buildings. Plus some new, uh, multifamily construction. I've recently seen a concept plan for twelve townhouses at the former Glenview. Uh, conceptually aware of a twenty four unit age restricted, uh, daycare facility at ten Technology Drive. Uh, the most recent iteration of nine Acton Road contemplates fourteen townhouses. Uh, currently, uh, in front of the planning board is, uh, uh, twelve duplexes for a total of twenty four units at two thirty six Groton Road. So if you were to take into account what what we've approved. Uh, and what is potentially, um, to be proposed. You're looking at a total twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty two projections of a total of fifteen thousand. Five hundred ninety five total housing units of which. One thousand, nine hundred fifty seven would potentially be affordable. That would, uh, bring your subsidized inventory to twelve point five five percent. With an excess capacity above ten percent of three hundred and ninety eight units. So that's, uh, what I believe the board was looking for related to some, um, housing. Uh, projections and more specifically subsidized housing inventory projections. I will say that I had mentioned to you that there were seven hundred fifty between two thousand and two thousand and ten. This analysis, uh, projects a total of approximately nine hundred and sixteen new dwelling units from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. Be happy to try to answer any of the questions that you may have.
So the first thing I noticed, Evan, is. We have three hundred ninety eight above the safety limit in the two twenty, you know, two thousand and twenty two projections. The UMass Lip is four hundred of those.
Correct. That's essentially, uh, make a, make a break as when it comes to. Um, subsidized housing inventory projections. And that assumes that projects that, um, are anticipated to be proposed without any affordability. Uh, would remain such. Um, the planning board has recently, uh. Indicated that they would like to have some some, um, board workshop, uh, sessions. To revisit their, um, their recent strategy as to how they view and deal with, uh, the inclusionary housing bylaw. Uh, and that's primarily based upon, uh, the notion that, um. The first, the the first handful of overlay multifamily housing projects. The board viewed as a strategy of reaching ten percent. So I believe at this point, there are members of the planning board who, uh, want to have a conversation, uh, to revisit whether, uh. That strategy should be, um, should be modified moving forward.
Any other questions by anybody on the board?
All these have saw, uh. Have you, is this, are these included in the current sewer, uh? That Steve gave us up updated, uh?
The 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 one, the only ones that I'm aware of that, um, are included are the ones that are currently in front of the planning board, the forty units. Um, thirty two at Gris Mill two and the eight at Oddfellows. Um. And the, uh, the twenty four units at two thirty six Groton Road.
Okay, thank you. And and it, how many of those?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How many of those would be affordable?
None are proposed as affordable. Uh, Gris Mill two and Oddfellows are subject to the inclusionary housing bylaw. That the the applicant and planning board will be discussing, uh, their payment.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't, I don't know the best way to ask it, so I'll just ask it. Knowing that the UMass West Campus is. In the process of of, you know, working with one of our board members and going through their review. The fact that, you know, that we get a credit there for four hundred. Affordable and three hundred and seventy nine is our. Is our safety net. Um, Evan or Paul, how much did that weigh on your, um? Your thoughts or approval or? Opinion about that project?
Um, I I wouldn't for purposes of, um, housing projections and particularly subsidized housing projections. While this analysis shows that those four hundred units would set the town up very nicely for the next decade. There's a lot of assumptions, as you can see, and based upon your your previous agenda item. Um, many of those, uh, projects that had, um, identified a, a, a unit range. Are likely going to have to go back to the drawing board. Uh, in order to accommodate the the expense associated with, uh, treatment plans. Um, or septic.
I'm confused on that now that we're looking at it. The, you have four hundred total housing units and four hundred subsidized housing. I thought it was only twenty five percent of the four hundred.
Or a rental project under forty B. All all the units count towards.
Okay, thank you.
You know, so a lot of people forget the rental piece of that and.
That same trend's reflected up in the first, the first segment. If you look at one oh four Turnpike.
Now we went from five to ten very quickly there. There's a lot of, uh. A lot of, uh. Uh, apartments, right? We started the affordable housing plan.
Yeah, you know, I will say, um, that, uh. The, George, you're a member of Housing Advisory Board for the last decade. I I think for, uh, residents who have been involved in, um, housing. Uh, planning, particularly on the Housing Advisory Board, and those that have been tracking, uh, the updates over the last decade. The, um, the tremendous amount of multifamily projects and housing in general, uh, should not come as a as a surprise. Right? I think as, uh, as as some have heard me, uh, uh, mention, particularly during master planning. Uh, Chelmsford has always been viewed as a, as an excellent, uh, place to live. Um, and historically, Chelmsford has been, uh, fairly, uh, amenable and accommodating, unlike many other suburban communities, to allow diverse, um, housing opportunities and housing stock.
Absolutely. But but every time they come in with a, like a hundred units or whatever, and it was a rental, it was. Was really welcome because it was going to, you know, we're going to get to that ten percent much more quickly, you know?
Yeah, like I said, I think, I think the.
Your expertise with is not, you know, and and Paul Haverty did it and, uh, John Edward, I mean, uh, and, uh.
Correct, correct. I, you know, I think while, while, um. I, you know, I think while, while, um, many viewed the housing strategy as chasing ten percent, if you were to, if you were to review those, those plans and document, documents, particularly the, the master plan, it was always in conjunction with a, um, with a strategic economic development, uh, strategy. Housing has not been looked at, um, as a silo where you just, uh, produce housing. It's, at least in the, in the documents, um, that have been drafted and adopted over the last decade, housing has been a critical component of the town's economic development strategy. Many of the, uh, the new restaurants, uh, that you see in the, in the center, as well as other parts of the community, um, I personally don't think is coincid, is, is, uh, is not coincidental. I think if you didn't have the influx of fifteen-hundred new, um, you know, housing units over a twenty-year period, you likely would not have, um, much of the restaurant investment, uh, that the community currently is seeing. Those, um, new housing units, particularly, um, rental central corridor forty-B type development, does attract, um, about forty percent of those units, on average, are occupied by young professionals, people who are, who haven't bought a home yet. Remaining sixty percent are from retirees or empty nesters, people in Chelmsford who are looking to downsize. Um, both of those groups very often have, um, disposable income, and I think, um, that was, that was acknowledged and understood as part of the town's, uh, strategy to revitalize our numbered roots and our commercial corridors.
Right, I think those, uh, some special, uh, like C R and, and those, those have helped a lot because they're, they're right, right on top of a lot of, uh, restaurants, or, you know, business, within walking distance and what is good for older people, as well as, you know, like you said, the younger people who, you know, walk across the street and have a, oh, bite to eat and a cocktail or something, and, so, I mean, that, they were good, they were great, uh, you know, great ideas that you brought up there. Let's see.
Any other questions?
Sorry, Evan, I don't know, I got muted there. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, have a great night.
You too. With that, we'll go to, uh, Chief Spiny, Chelmsford Police Department outreach initiatives.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Good evening, that was the board, good evening. Um, Mr. Chairman, thanks for letting me speak. I know it's been a full agenda, I'll probably be brief as I can, but I did think it was important and helpful that after watching last week's board meeting, that I did touch upon the many commuse, community policing outreach initiatives that the Chelmsford Police Department is currently engaged in, and in fact, we have been engaged in for many, many years. So I'm gonna go through the list, I'll expand on some of them, some of them are self-explanatory. I'll expand where I need to, and if someone wants to circle back with a question about it, uh, that'll be fine. Uh, the first one is our police athletically, or commonly referred to as PAL. Uh, for those that don't know, there are PAL chapters all over the United States, there are a number, a number of them here in Massachusetts, and I'm proud to say that the Chelmsford PAL is one of the best-run PAL programs in the state. Uh, Chelmsford PAL gives back over fifty-thousand dollars a year to the Chelmsford community, and that's through money donations, food assistance, heating, heating oil, and gas assistance in the winter. Uh, the police athletic league also donates ten-thousand-dollar scholarship to Chelmsford High School seniors, and it's the largest scholarship awarded in town. Other PAL efforts include, you've probably heard of this one, flag football, floor hockey, the kids and family movie night, and that's been a huge event, and that's not just a Chelmsford, we have opened that up to the region. And prior to COVID, that was getting larger and larger every year, hundreds and hundreds of, of participants, kids with their families, um, food, ice cream, popcorn, all at no cost. All walks of life came to that event, it was very much enjoyed. A lot of, a lot of donations by a lot of town businesses also participated to make that a fantastic event. PAL has participated in bicycle safety events, PAL has donated bike helmets and bicycles to kids in need. They've also donated bikes to kids that had their bikes stolen. We've had a number of instances in town where an officer will take a report of a, of a child's bike that had been stolen, they talk to the PAL director, Lieutenant Hanigan, and a couple days later, that child's been provided with a brand-new bike at no cost. PAL has also donated presents to kids and families around the holidays for those families that are in need. So that's been a huge program for us, a lot of moving parts. It takes a ton of offices volunteering their time to make PAL go all year long, and prior to COVID, that's exactly what it did, and it's really been second to none. Um, some other department programs include the Toys for Tots Drive that we do every year, um, officers volunteer their time at Walmart during the holiday season, and they stay there till they fill up the police transport van with toys. The Tippercock Program, offices volunteer and wait tables at local restaurants, raising money for various charities. The Toe Drunk to Drive Initiative, the Police Department partnering with Christopher's Toing around the holidays when people sometimes overindulge, provided free rides home and a free tow to anybody that needs it. No questions asked, you don't gotta give your name, none of that, just to make sure people get home safe. And probably the worst-kept secret in town, we do that all year long. If the Police Department or an officer becomes aware that someone's really shouldn't be driving, we'd rather get there first, get that person home safe. We have little mini open houses at the police station, we provide police station tours. Again, this is all prior to COVID, most of these programs are in a suspended state right now, but we provide tours on a regular basis to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and their families. We participate in Special Olympic events across the state. We participate with COPS for kids with cancer across the state. We also participate in breast cancer awareness events. We participate in the Korea Day at Chelmsford High, I actually went one year for several offices. We set up poster boards, we interacted with juniors and seniors, talked to them about what it's like to be law enforcement officer, encouraged them to be interested. We encourage officers to volunteer at the high school, we have several that do. They help coach at the high school wrestling and lacrosse. We have a college intern program, we work with UMass Lowell and other colleges, again, try to talk, communicate, outreach to college students, have them come into the police department, see what it's like, the inner workings, operational issues, and they get to eventually do a ride-along and accrue with offices. We participate in readings at Chelmsford Elementary Schools. During COVID-nineteen, we participated in a ton of birthday potty drive-bys. I had parents calling me, asking that since they couldn't have a normal birthday potty for their child, if a police officer would show up and be part of the procession, and we, and we tried to do every single one. We provide security assessments and training at town businesses and places of worship in town. I have officers that have gone to almost every place of worship in Chelmsford, sat down with the leadership of that place of worship, and done security and safety audits, created safety teams, how to make their building as safe as possible. We're doing more and more on our social media platforms. Obviously, we have Twitter, we have Facebook, and we're trying to get better every year. We're gonna soon be rolling out another program called Tips Four-One-One. When this is up and running, people will be able to reach out to the police department through an app or text us directly, totally anonymous, to report any type of incident. We participate in the age-friendly initiatives at the senior center, trying to make Chelmsford a better place for our seniors. And we continue to build and improve on our clinician outreach program, which I've highlighted for a number of years, and it's getting better and better. We're adding a second clinician, we're adding recovery coaches, um, we just applied for a grant with our other communities, that program continues to expand, and it's been one of the biggest things we've been, we've endeavored to do, and it's been very, very successful. Just this last month, we've established a wellness division of the department, brand-new division, that'll focus on nothing other than mental health, substance use problems, and we're also adding diversity, diversity for the offices and the community. Lastly, we've gotten huge positive feedback from our school resource, uh, school resource officer program from Superintendent Lang and both middle school principals. One quick story, that I was told this story a year ago, and it's always stuck with me, one of our school resource officers found out a family had a tragic loss, he, he came very involved with that family, got them through the holidays, the family doesn't even live in Chelmsford anymore, and this school resource officer still reaches out to make sure the kids are okay. So the goal of all these programs and initiatives is to interact with members of our community and beyond, create long-lasting positive partnerships, and help make our town and region a great place to be part of. I believe you'd be hard-pressed to find a police department doing as many initiatives and programs that we got here in Chelmsford, and I'm not afraid to say tonight that we haven't fallen behind, we're, we're in faculty meeting. Um, all these programs are, of course, in addition to the thirty-thousand-plus calls for service that we handle every year. And while I had a moment, I did want to touch upon some of the training we do every year, because there has been some misconception about this. Um, some of the training, the newer ones that the officers have been getting the last couple of years, LGBT community and police relationship building, bullying in social media, police interactions, persons with mental illness and emotional distress, fair and impartial policing and procedural justice, de-escalation techniques, interventions with persons with Alzheimer's and dementia, police interactions with youth, and unbiased policing. And, and if I can just wrap by saying, I, I talked at the vigil several months ago, I spoke at the diversity listening session when you had that, and I meant what I said. Nothing is more important in Chelmsford Police Department than professionalism, respect, empathy, and making, everyone feel inclusive. I think we've done a great job. I travel around the state, I talk to chiefs of other departments, we don't have problems that you see, a lot of other departments, and that's not because of the rules and regs we have in place, yes, they are there, it's because of the people. We have a stellar core of officers that every day do their best to make this town the best it can be, um, and I'm very, very proud of them, and, uh, again, we're not perfect, always trying to improve and move forward, and if the town's gonna move forward on a diversity committee, we'll be happy to work with them or any other group to have Chelmsford continue to be the great community that it is, and even better. So, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Can I, uh, say one thing, Jimmy, please? Oh. Usually, and, uh, I think it's great that you, you do so much with the kids, I think it's great that the younger the kids meet the police and get comfortable with them, it, a lot better it's gonna be for them, you know, throughout their life. And I, and because of our next, uh, you mentioned diversity and social equity and stuff, have you had any complaints at all by, uh, biased policies, uh, by any members of your department at all?
I'm glad you brought that up, so I, I was actually meant to add that in, I forgot. So I've been chief for six years, and I've been on the Chelmsford Police Department for about twenty-six years, and I honestly cannot tell you, definitely since I've been chief, I have not had one complaint come across my desk of any type of excessive use of force or any type of racist, um, scenario. I was deputy chief, I can't recall it, I was lieutenant before that, I ran a shift for, for ten years, a shift commander, we just don't see it, yeah. I'm, I'm not saying an officer can't have a bad day, maybe they come off a little rude, it happens, we're all human.
Right.
But, but those type of things, we, we're just not seeing it, and that's a credit to the offices.
Absolutely, that's a credit to our whole department, right, you're, you're right. Thank you.
If, I wanna say that, that was a great presentation, and I, I knew probably, even having a son on the force, knew probably, uh, uh, maybe sixty percent of that, seventy percent of that, but you touched on stuff I didn't know. Is there a fund that the public can donate to, to help, uh, support either, um, the PAL program or some of the other programs you're doing?
Yeah, a PAL takes direct donations, I mean, the way we give money back to the community is through donations, um, like the PAL Golf. Um, the best way people can, can provide is to participate in the, in the programs at PAL Office, whether it's PAL Golf or other things. Um, anybody can reach out to me through, uh, email or Lieutenant Gary Hanigan, and, um, find out ways they can, um, contribute.
Great, good job, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, chief.
Uh, if you just wanna hold on, chief, we'll go to the, um, yeah, losing, oh, there it is. Um, so we have a, uh, a resolution and, uh, which is our next item on the agenda, you know, Virginia, would you mind reading that for us?
Sure. Uh, Town of Chelmsford Board of Selectmen Resolution relating to support of our police department. Whereas it is recognized that in recent months, we have seen protests around the country in the wake of the deaths of George Floyd and others, and whereas, as a result, recent legislation aimed at sweeping police reform to include fundamental changes in civil service process, collective bargaining, labor management, and qualified immunity for our police officers. And whereas the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen has witnessed our police officers perform to the highest level of professionalism throughout the last several months, during which Massachusetts has suffered through a pandemic, civil unrest, and economic shutdown. And whereas it is recognized by the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen that our officers have always been sensitive to issues of fairness and justice, and have responded with care and compassion to all members of our community, be it resolved that the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen's support for the men and women who serve this town in the police force is unwavering, and be it resolved that the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen wish to convey that we stand with our police department in solidarity, given the seventeenth day of August, twenty-twenty, the Board of Selectmen.
And so, chief, I'll have that, uh, sent out for signature, and, uh.
Can we discuss it? Can, I, we have to talk about it.
Sure, sure. All right.
Um, so I guess I have a couple of questions. First of all, who, who wrote this?
Uh, this was written, oh, was someone saying something? Uh, this was written and taken from other towns that have had similar, um, resolutions.
Well, I, I guess I'm confused, it seems the first two paragraphs really don't connect to the rest of the, the resolution. I mean, are you, are you saying that we oppose the first, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't understand it, I don't understand how the first two paragraphs relate to the rest of the document.
I think what the first paragraph says is, whereas there's been, um, just a lot of pressure through the, you know, the protests and things like that that are going on in the country, and where there's litigation that's going on right now to the police officers, um, you know, it changes to their civil process, the civil service process and bargaining and labor management, um, and whereas, um, we've witnessed our police officers perform to the highest level of professionalism, um, I think with all those pressures that are on the police, we're just telling them that we support our police officers here in Chelmsford with the job they're doing.
But does this imply that we don't support any police reform? I mean, we don't even know what's gonna come out of the legislature as far as police reform, and it seems that.
No, I don't think it's saying one way or the other that we support or not support, but I think all we're saying is that with the pressures that are being presented to our police officers, um, right now, uh, and, I mean, they're really, on all fronts, being, uh, pressured, and they're dealing with a lot of things, um, on top of what they normally deal with, it's just that we support them as they go through this trying time.
I, 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 just, I'm uncomfortable with the way it's, the way it's written, I, uh, well.
What would you change, Pat?
I, I guess I would try to indicate what, what the first, especially the second paragraph, I guess, um, is trying to say. I mean, is it saying that we don't support any, any of these, um, reforms, possible reforms? Because, you know, as I said, I, we haven't seen what's gonna come out of that, the legislation. Um, and as the chief even said, we, you know, just a, a few minutes ago, um, you know, the force isn't perfect, and, and I, I agree that I have the utmost respect for our police force, I really do, I mean, we saw an indication of that just last week when they, um, saved that, that, uh, that child up in, up in Williamsburg, I mean, that's, um, that's typical of, of how they react. And we've seen other situations where other, um, you know, for police forces have maybe used excessive force and, and our, and our police officers do not do that. I absolutely appreciate that and understand that. But, um, I, I'm not willing to make something that looks like a blanket statement that we, that we don't, um, support any, any reforms because we don't know what's going to happen years from now. And we don't know what's going to happen with other police forces. And I don't think we want to say we're opposed to all police reform. Because our.
I think you're. I, I think you're reading way into that. I don't think it says anything near that. I think it says where as a result of recent litigation aimed at sweeping police reform to include fundamental changes to civil service process, collective bargaining, labor management, qualified New York police officers. I just think that what we're saying is with the pressure that they're feeling, um, you know, and their job right now between, you know, everything they're dealing with, on top of doing their job at the highest level that they've been doing it, we're just saying to them, we want you to know we still support you. We're not saying we don't support or don't, or, or do support the reform. It doesn't even come close to saying that.
I, I don't read it that way. I mean, if, if there were additional words in there that, that said something like that. But.
I guess that brings back to what, what you change?
I would add something like what you just said. We understand that because of these things, there's additional, um, pressures and on, on the police force and they handle these professionally or something like that. It, it, it just kind of leaves it hanging. It's almost not even a a proper sentence.
Right. But the only two resolves, which is where you'd probably see what you're saying is be it resolved, the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen support the men and women who serve this town and police force in unwavering. And be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen wish to convey that we stand with our police department in solidarity. I don't. That's the resolve part. I don't see in there that we stand resolved to, you know, fight against any, you know, uh, changes to, to the law or we're resolved to.
Then why is it there? If you're not, if you're not referencing that, why is it there?
Because it's just like every other proclamation we write, you list out in your where assets, the, the purpose of what drove that decision.
I understand. And that's what I'm saying.
Pat, is your concern the solidarity piece because it ties back into everything else? I, I'm trying to understand.
I guess I'm concerned, I guess I'm concerned that it, it implies to me that, you know, it's, it's our police force, right or wrong? And, and as I said, I have utmost faith and confidence in our, in our police force.
Pat isn't the only one. This, this way too. I, I have a series of messages here. I, you know, and I think that the intention is good. But I think that the messaging could be refined. I mean, I, I have some serious complaints about that sitting on my phone right now. Um, and, and it's, it's being heard that way too. So Pat, Pat is not the.
So what, Emily, what would you change?
I, I think that. Pat is right. The way it's structured, it ends up sounding like, you know, it's, it's it's creating a pedestal. And the problem with pedestals is that they, they tend to overshadow and trample any criticism, legitimate or not. And I'm also getting questions about, you know, how, how can the police force reach out to POC and black youth and teens more specifically and directly? Um, and that would be a great thing to add to the, to the list of specific targeted initiatives that they have um, to to create that sense of acceptance and inclusion. And, um, I'm glad to hear, uh, the LGBTQIA community specifically referenced because they often experience, um, negative reactions too. But I, I mean, like I've also got messages about, about how certain members have been, uh, responded to when they've called in to nine one one and dealt with the dispatcher that, you know, refused to accept, um, the, the actual gender identity and name of the person. So I, I think that, that, uh, you know, I think the impetus is good in saying that we support so many of the good initiatives and, and the people who, who went in to policing in our force for all the right reasons. But I am seeing that it is not just Pat who is reading this as unequivocal pedestaling, to invent a verb of, of a chosen profession. And I, I think, I think that, you know, the reaction that, that I am seeing, like in live, real time from people watching this, it's, it's Pat is not the only one reading it this way. And so I think, I think that the, the, the impetus is good. I think that the, the, the message of recognition of how hard it has been for everyone is, is valid. I mean, but like.
Can I, can I try something, Emily?
That's, that's for our healthcare workers. That's for our teachers. That's for our, I, I mean, there are so many people who are, who are also literally putting their lives on the line and trying to figure out how to continue to function in society as well as professionally. So.
So may I just say a couple of things in response to that? Um, I don't, I don't feel that, first of all, I, I absolutely support some level of recognition here. I don't feel that putting in this document initiatives is, this isn't the place for that. I think some of the things that you mentioned are accommodated in the third paragraph talking about, um, acknowledging the civil unrest in the state and in the fourth paragraph, um, acknowledging the sensitivity to issues of fairness and justice and responding to compassion to all members of the community. I personally, I think that covers it for the purposes of this document. Chief, I would ask for your input on what I'm about to say as well. Um, I just kind of listening to you and Pat scribbling, would it, would it work for you if we said something almost collapsed the first two? Whereas it is recognized that our police officers have faced increased pressures and demands in the wake of protests and recent legislative action resulting from the deaths of George Floyd and others. And then whereas the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen has witnessed our police officers perform and the rest of it. Does that address your concern? And Chief Spinney, does that still meet the intent of what you would hope us we recognize?
Yes, when this was brought to my attention, what Drake did, I shared it with the chairman. Um, I really wanted to start a dialogue because it would mean a lot to the officers to, to hear the support from our local government. Um, to use a little funny phrase, I think we do it better than the average bear here in Chelmsford. And I just gave off a list of the things, always room for improvement, but our room for improvement is much smaller than other places' room for improvement. I will be open to any modification the board feels comfortable with if the genesis of it is the Board of Selectmen realized that what's going on across this nation, police have been put in a negative light, in some cases unjustifiably so. I certainly don't feel like I have to apologize for anything here in Chelmsford, and that's what the men and women that work for me feel. So it would mean a lot to them for that simple gesture of, yes, you guys do do an exceptional job and we appreciate it. Um, in light of what's going on, that, that's what I think is the meaning of those two, first two paragraphs. Again, I didn't create the wording. It was kind of wrapped. I'd be open to, uh, some conversation on that show.
And Chief Spinney, I think what's it, what, I mean, it's impressive, the list of things that you went through. But what I, what I love to hear the most is that that, that you know there's room for improvement and you're open to improvement. That's like, you know, step number one, the biggest, biggest move forward is, yep, we need improvement and we're open to and, oh, you know, willing to listen to constructive criticism. That's, you know, kudos to you, um, for having, because that, go ahead.
Well, case in point, after, after the murder of Mr. Floyd, we looked at user force policy. And although it's an accredited policy, we tightened it up. We added an additional area of you shall intervene if you see excessive force being used by anybody regardless of rank. We always assumed that because our code of ethics demanded, but we added it. We added a separate line on chokeholds. We don't train those in Chelmsford. We don't do them in Chelmsford. We added a line anyway to, to strengthen it. Um, I think one of the things I listed was I just created a diversity division in the police department under community wellness. And we're going to start tackling even more as far as more outreach to people of diverse backgrounds. So to your point, yes, we're never stopping. We never settle. It's always full steam ahead.
And, and Chief, I, you know, I hope that you, you don't take, you know, my, my comments as, as doubting these things that the, that the, the force does. Because like I said, I, I've, I've seen situations where they do act more professionally and basically with, with better outcomes than in, in other, other communities. Um, but as you said, there are ways that you can improve. I mean, I'm, I'm pleased to hear what you, what you said about, you know, use of force and, and other things like that. And I guess that's even more why I guess I would oppose that second paragraph because it seems like, um, that kind of opposes any reform. And I think some of those, some of those reforms that you mentioned that you implemented would be better if they were done at a state level or even a national level. Would you agree with that?
I would, but I haven't seen the final product yet. There's some of these things being discussed that are going to be, are, I could have, uh, adverse effects on, on how we perform and function. I, it's yet to be seen. I've seen the full gamut. Some of them are great ideas. Some of them are not so great. Um, I look at this, uh, document as not so much a binding contract. I, I really look at it more of, of, of a show of support. Um, uh, at this time, at this point in time, we have a great police department with stellar employees. Uh, that being said, I would not be opposed to, to working with the chairman and crafting something if it's more palatable to the board, but, you know.
Well, I, I mean, I maybe working with either the vice chair or, or Emily and Pat, right? I'm not really, I was fine with the way that was written. Maybe Pat and Emily can take a slice at it and send it to us, um, to something that you.
Do we, do we need to, Pat and Emily, do we need to take more time on it or can we agree on an edit tonight?
Um, I, I'd rather take a little time if, if that's okay. Um, you know, maybe I can put in some changes that I would recommend and maybe send it to you, Ken, and then you can run it by Emily or not. And, you know, we don't want to violate open meeting law on this.
Well, can you, can you make the edits, send it out to all of us and then comments forwarded to me?
I think we can do that.
I still, I, I gotta be honest with you. I'm still a little confused. I ju, I think those first couple of paragraphs are written the way they're written to give the impression that sometimes people see reform and they automatically conclude that, that what is in existence is incorrect. So I think if you were to sign the document as is, you're basically saying regardless of what reform looks like in the end, Chelmsford Police as it stands now is doing it right or doing it better.
Then, you know, I, I would like to see something like that in here. And, and I, I do absolutely agree with that statement that you just made.
Again, you guys have far more experience on the, on the proclamation type of things than I do. I just think that it might be a little bit of some overreaching on some of these issues, but I understand.
May, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. So if, if I were to make some edits, can I run it by you then, Chief?
Absolutely. I gotta, I gotta be honest with you. I think it would have been, I would think it would have been very beneficial and powerful if the board could have approved it as is tonight. Cause I know a lot of officers were interested in this tonight. Uh, I think it would have sent a very strong, powerful message. Um, but, um, that's just my opinion.
I'm willing to sign it to where it is, but you guys can do whatever you want to do.
I, I think given the reaction I'm seeing live here is, uh, I mean, my, my question would be, do you want sincerity or do you want platitudes? And I think sincerity is going to be better than than platitudes. I, I think that it's worth acknowledging that we have more conscientious officers on many levels than in many communities. I I think if we're going to make these proclamations, then they should be carefully considered and well written and I think it's one of those things where we need input from the people who are most likely to be impacted by negative aspects of policing in America, whether or not we do it better here in Chelmsford.
Well, just to be clear, on, on proclamations, we're going to now start asking for input.
Well, we don't, we don't do that on any other proclamation.
I mean, but when, so, so many of them are like, uh, I don't know, like we're going to march for memorial day, like so many of them are, are, are pro forma. They've been done. Like it's just like, pull it up, read it. This is a new one. And, and I think that, that given given the reality of the situation and, and what spurred this, I, I think that it, it merits a consideration when you have responses like this. So.
Here's, here, I mean, here's where I stand. If I'm fine signing this tonight. If you and Pat want another cycle to look at it, I respect that. I don't think it should be delayed past our next meeting. And I think at that point, we take a roll call vote on whether or not each one of us individually signs it. Uh, because I, I, I think delaying it and iterating it over and over is just sending the wrong message to our whole first responder community. And we either want to sign something that says we support what they do and we're grateful for what they do in the wake of all the increased pressures that have gone on recently, or we don't. And if there's wording here that's causing you difficulty, I'm okay with taking a quick pass at it and coming back at the next meeting, but let's get it resolved.
Yeah.
So is that the end of that discussion?
I guess I would just ask, Chief, are you okay? You're okay taking another pass through it with input from Pat and or Emily?
I, again, I think it would have been powerful to have the board accept it as is. Again, this is not something we're locked into. You're just saying you support the PD and all that's happened across our country between COVID and the protests and the fact that we do well by our community. And you have a stellar police department that complaints don't come in on. They just don't. And you have a stellar police department that complaints don't come in on, they just don't. Uh, you know, I don't wanna be out of place. I, I say, I say, take a vote and people wanna sign it, they sign it, they don't, they don't.
I agree.
Let, let, let the board speak as it is tonight, but that's up to the gym.
And I'll ask my question again, I mean, are we not able to make a quick edit tonight to get you in a more comfortable place?
Oh, you'd like to do an edit tonight?
No, I'm asking Pat and, and Emily. Cause I think, I think the issue that you're having is the way the second paragraph is worded.
I, I guess I would say that's not the only, that's not the only thing that, that I, I mean, just taking that out is not gonna, not gonna really correct everything. I, I would like a few minutes to be able to, to come up with an edit. I mean, if you wanna take a vote, but I don't feel like that's fair to take a vote on, on this one, given that if we wait till our next meeting, we could get a, hopefully a unanimous vote on it.
I think.
Like I said, I don't wanna delay it past another meeting.
I don't think we should go that far. I think you're really telling them that you don't really have any faith in them when you're not.
George, I've said three times that I do have total faith and confidence in them. But this shouldn't be a meaningful document, it shouldn't be something that we just rubber stamp.
Okay.
All right. So Chief, I, I, yeah, I'm sorry that we couldn't, uh, you know, send a, a unanimous message back to them that we support them under this scrutiny and, uh,
I think there is a unanimous message that we do support them and they are better than the average. But there is a problem with the second paragraph, as Pat has clearly stated. So no, I don't want some milquetoast hallmark card. I want it to be meaningful. But I also don't want members of the black community in town looking at that and saying, huh, yeah. They're very, I'd like, I, I, people are uncomfortable with this. And so I am responding based on the feedback I'm getting. Also, what I've seen, given what I've known and the complaints I have heard. So I, you know, I mean, I, I just think if you're gonna do it, then actually make it real and meaningful and have everyone comfortable with it. Because you could come up with something genuine and real and have it.
All right, so you know what? Let's come up with something genuine and real, the damage is done. I mean, the opportunity is, is gone, so let's do it. And, uh, so something that you'd be happy with and send a message to them that we support them with the words that you choose. And we'll go from there.
You know, it hasn't been spoiled, Ken, you're making it sound like it's all spoiled because we haven't done it tonight. And I understand that the chief's, you know, concerned, but I, I would rather it be done right than be done quickly.
Okay, then we'll do it that way. All right, so with that, we'll move on to, um, item eight, diversity and racial equity and inclusion committee composition. What did we decide you wanted to do, everybody wanted to do here?
I have some folks who are very interested, like I have heard some very high levels of interest about this. The question is, what is the direction and the frameworks? So.
I, I wrote down a few thoughts based on our last conversation. I thought what we were going to talk about tonight was potential composition of the committee and what does it look like? And so thinking about the buckets that were identified at our last meeting based on the public input session. I think that I would consider having a town employee. Again, I think all of this, to the point that was discussed last week, should be more grassroots in recommending to the leadership of the town what, what should be done or where do we need help and resources? So I had a town employee identified, I had a representative from the first responder community. I thought that we ought to have somebody on the committee related to the school system, whether that's a school committee liaison person or someone affiliated with the Chelmsford Public Schools. If nothing else, just to make sure there's some continuity and tie there to everything that the school system is already put in motion. I thought we might wanna consider having one of the committee slots, a youth or a young adult. And I thought we might wanna consider someone from the business community and then maybe like three to five at large who may be parents or professionals in the field. And the other thought that I was having is, you know, this committee that we put in place may be recommending other ad hoc subcommittees. So I think it's important to just get it in place and let them have an initial discussion and come back with where they wanna head. I know that we have traditionally said, let's appoint somebody or have other committees appoint somebody. And one thought that I had in line with the grassroots effort that we talked about is when we decide what we want the demographics of the committee to look like, should we just put an application out there and on that application say, what slot or slot, you know, could you fill in your interest in this communit, committee? So for example, if we decided there was going to be a town employee and a school person and someone from the business community and three to five at large, then you from a, from a, um, community level, you could go in and apply and say, hey, I could fill either a town employee slot or a member of the community at large, or, or I'm applying to fill this, this part, this position on that committee. And I'm just wondering if we might get a better cross-section of people who are interested if we left all applications open, so. I'll stop talking now, but those were some of my initial thoughts in, in terms of the actual demographics, how we fill it is just mechanics we can work out. And I also, I'm sorry, one more thing, I had the board of selectmen as a question mark. Cause I know we always have somebody on the committee, but then my thought was if we really want this to be kind of a grassroots level, should we have a selectman on that agenda or should we as a board be there to listen and help support the entire committee? And I don't, I'm not hard over either way, but it was a question I raised.
Virginia, I, I don't think we should have a board member on there. If you are interested in meetings, you can always attend.
I, I agree with that. I think a lot of times when she have a, a board member, especially if it's a, a rather large committee and has a lot of new people on it, the, the, this, this select can kind of direct it and, and everybody just follows along and.
Or you inadvertently, you inadvertently change the dynamic of it just by being there.
Yes, absolutely, sometimes even just by being in the room, quite frankly.
Right, that's what I mean.
Um, I mean, I, I would agree, I think that's a, a good list that Virginia came up with. Maybe there's one other that I might add and that would be a member of the faith community.
Yeah, I had that listed too. I just didn't read it. I think that was in part of my three to five at large, but if you wanted to identify that as a specific slot, that would make sense too.
And we would just put it out there as a member and have whoever apply and then choose one.
You mean from the faith community or which or?
Yeah, yeah, no, the faith community, you just send it out to all the different ministries and let them sort of apply and then, and then I, I don't know how you necessarily choose on that one, but.
I, I think as Virginia mentioned, maybe in, in the application, you could specifically, and I don't know if we'd have a separate application for this. You could specifically say which of those categories you fall into so that we could be sure of, you know, if we have two from the faith community, it's not a bad thing. But, um.
Okay.
Are we gonna have, so, 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 um, are we inviting, uh, the faith community in to talk about how the government is run?
That's up to the committee. I don't.
Are we inviting religion to come tell government how to do things?
I don't think that would be the point of this committee. This committee is not gonna be here to tell the government how to run. This committee is gonna be here to help the community at large. And I think members of the faith community have a good pulse on how a lot in the community do act as far as diversity, inclusion and so forth.
Some of them do for sure, absolutely. Can we get a member of the atheist community in there too?
Okay, I'm done.
No, I, like.
I've made my comment. Fantastic.
I am, what?
This, you know, you, you bring, you're taking it to a, a.
No, I'm not.
Okay, then fine, then I, then I withdraw that statement and I'll just stop, I'm.
That is childish. Why can you not answer a question? You wanna talk about having diverse members in there? You wanna talk about the faith community, then you should talk about the atheist community, the humanist community, the free-thinking community. If you're gonna specify those things and we're still not talking about BIPOC outreach.
All right, so where it's 10:41 and we still have quite a bit left of the agenda, let's, if someone from the atheist community under the faith part wants to apply, then so be it. I, I like the way Virginia laid it out, I, I think that was well thought. And as she was reading that, I kinda like Paul had the same sort of head shake, like that made sense. And I, I think she did a good job with that. And if you wanna add one more in there for the faith community, we'll see what we get. How would it work with other town departments though, as far as police, fire? You said a member of the school committee or someone from the schools?
So, yeah, I, I said just generically a town employee.
Okay.
I said generically someone from the first responder community, police, fire, whatever.
All right.
And then I said generically someone associated with the school system.
Okay, all right, so yeah, I, I like everything you laid out, I'm good with that.
What, what I think I heard Virginia say, and, and it's kind of intriguing, is she said, let's put a call out for interest in the community to serve on this committee. And then in your application, tell us what you bring to the committee and, and what segment of the community you think you represent. And then you have all these applications and then you can sort of formulate a committee, right? Right, I mean, you said, yeah.
And I said three to five at large, I don't know if we wanna put a number on it, but my thought was that's where you're also going to be able to choose other people who are representative of different aspects of the community.
So in other words, instead of a detailed grocery, detailed list of check the box, it's sort of, you know, give us what, what you think you can bring and, and, and therefore, you know, the board, each of the board members will consider all applications and then come together and form a committee that we think, you know, matches the interest in the community and the skills of those who are willing to serve. I, I, I mean, I think it's great, yeah, by its simplicity.
Okay. Does anybody else wanna tweak that, change it, or are we good with that?
So who is running this? Are we just going to see if it forms itself without?
Yeah, I, I think one of the first tasks they would have is an organizational meeting. I'm sorry, Paul, were you saying something?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think the board of selectmen are the ones who determine who's on, who's formally on the committee. Now, that committee can form subcommittees once they're constituted, but I think there is a, a formally appointed committee that, you know, i- i- is established. And I think like one of the ones who sort of do that, uh, uh, initial formation. And then, as you said, you get out of their way and, and, and go from there. But I, I don't think the, if Emily was saying, does the committee just sort of form itself? No, there has to be an appointment of a committee by the five members. But what you've done is you've allowed an open-ended process in terms of anybody's welcome to apply and, and explain to the board why they should be on the committee and what, what group they represent and the skillset they bring. And then the selectmen see all those applications and then you come together and, and, and create a, the committee of nine or whatever ultimate number, eleven or whatever number. And then once that group was then formed, that group, you know, can form subcommittees or what have you, that would include people who aren't on the original committee. That's, that's how.
Away from it, I'm good with that.
So we're gonna put out a call for, for those applications, how long will we accept applications? Two weeks, three weeks? Maybe appoint the committee the first meeting after Labor Day?
Yeah, I think so.
I was, I was gonna say, I think it's gonna be ambitious to do something at our next meeting, especially since there's so much time that's gonna pass.
And so much.
Be a full agenda, yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right. Good, um, uh, item nine, recommendation for the August 24th special town meeting warrant article?
Yes, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll be, I'll be brief, I think you, we're all familiar with the Warren Pole property. Since your last meeting, the finance committee met of the five members who were present, they unanimously recommended unanimously to support the, uh, requested appropriation of 1.2 million dollars to be funded from the community preservation fund. Town meeting is this coming Monday evening. The property would be paid for over a 10-year period with, with community preservation monies that are collected annually through the community preservation surcharge. The good news is the estimated first year debt service, $146,000 is less than the $272,000 of debt services being paid off this year from the town halls project. So the, therefore, um, the, the project can be absorbed into the community preservation fund debt portfolio and the, the open space land would be, um, used for, under a permanent preservation restriction for open space purposes, which would include agricultural walking trails and the possibility of future date for a municipal wellfield if such need arises in the community. Again, just a wellfield, not a treatment plant and nothing that would disturb the open space characteristics of the property in any significant form. And again, the 1.2 million dollars is the, um, borrowing, the acquisition price is 1,150,000, which was the average of the two appraisals that were performed. And then the $50,000 is for the preservation restriction, uh, and baseline survey that's accompanying that. So that's, uh, what's before the town meeting next Monday. And so town meeting, we'll be asking the board's recommendation at that time.
Paul, I got a, um, call from a resident today saying she thought at the previous, and I didn't have a chance to go back and watch the meeting. She thought at the previous meeting you had said that the, it was enough money in CBF to pay for this, but then we would have to take a loan at 2%. So can you explain the financing behind this?
Yeah, yeah, the community preservation fund has, has cash on hand of which they could actually buy this property outright without borrowing it. The community preservation committee instead has chosen to, uh, borrow it over a 10-year period. And the reason for that is they wanna maintain cash reserves in order to meet the other challenges and opportunities that may arise that they do not foresee today. So that's the reason for the recommendation of, of borrowing. And where, where interest rates are so low at 2%, uh, or even less than that, 2% is a conservative number. Yeah, where, where products are so low, the feeling is, is let's borrow this and then therefore have liquidity in the community preservation fund for whatever future needs may arise.
Okay, and I think you did explain it at the last meeting, but like I said, she called. It was late in the afternoon and I didn't have a chance to go back and watch it and I told her I'd get an answer tonight, so thank you. So do you, uh, any discussion amongst the board? So are we So are we bringing our recommendation?
I make a motion to support the article for the acquisition of the Warren Pole property as stated.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you, Paul. Traffic mitigation options for Ledge Road. Anybody want to open a discussion of this or should I? So I think our, the reason why this is on the agenda tonight is we are trying to, I'm trying to figure out, we've had a couple of meetings on the access road parallel to Route 3 and, you know, and some of the other traffic issues in and around Ledge Road. Mike is, Mike McCall was sort of our point man on it. He's now gone and we have a new, he started today, Paul, the new assistant town manager?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I know he's not on the call on the Zoom, but I think we should, if he is going to take over Mike's sort of point position on this, if not, we need to figure out who will. But I think there are three prong approach that we should be following up on this. And, you know, one being moving of the pole back on Ledge Road. Not to encourage, but to allow trucks to take a left at the end there that, not ledge, but is that Dunstable where they can take a left? The second option is the, the road running parallel to Route 3. And the third is, I'm drawing a blank here, but I think my third thought was.
The third was executive sessions.
Oh, I see, executive session to not to talk about any other options, I guess, that, that still may be outstanding or possible with the situation that's up there.
What about the bus turnaround?
I was going to say there's a fourth.
Yeah, I was about to throw that. I was going to throw the fourth in there too. I mean, the bus turnaround, I think, really does help with, you know, kids that are getting the bus in the fall, but at this point, are we sure the school committee made 100% decision on whether there's going to be buses for them? And, and so forth. So I was kind of hesitant to throw in that fourth option.
I, I think that we should kind of just recalibrate on all four on some future agenda. At some point, we're going to be out of this COVID crisis and so I, I wouldn't want to. I'm not sure I would necessarily want to delay the bus turnaround, but I'd like to at least know what the status is.
Right. So I agree on that. Pat, any comments?
No, I mean, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of activities that's happened since the last time we had a report on this. So I guess that makes sense to some point, see what has happened and what the next steps are.
Emily?
I can't even begin to game out where we're going to be. I, I would, I mean, like, keep prised of status, keep prised of costs and, you know, I just. Honestly, I'm anticipating another complete and total shutdown in a few months, given the numbers coming out of colleges that have gone back. So I don't know. That's kind of where I'm at.
George?
I'd like to work on the road, obviously. I don't know if we, whether we have any shot there.
So, so George, here's my thought. I mean, I still think that we should, with Steve coming on board, we should look at some regular cadence, looking at the road. What needs to be done? Where are we? What's the next step? These other options that we talked about were brought up sequentially, I guess, as they occurred. And my thought would be that it would be good adding at a future meeting to just kind of recalibrate on all of it. Because if this road can't happen for some reason, we don't want to get caught short. And there may be some other balls we want to push along in parallel or not. But I think, I think now that we have four different options, I feel like we would benefit from taking a global look at all four. And a more disciplined.
Yeah, I just. Yep. I, I think the reason why I was really curious as to putting this on here. You know, I gave the review or the overview of the road. And again, if anybody has any questions or concerns, I'm, I'm always open to an email or phone call. But, you know, when this process started and, you know, we had a meeting with all the interested parties up there and and the lady who owns the land that's sort of the integral part on Route 40, she had given us a deadline to fall town meeting to do something. And we're going to be looking at the fall town meeting warrant and obviously there's nothing on there. And I'm not necessarily sure that means the road is dead, but because of what's going on with COVID and everything else. But I, I think that if we just let the meetings click off and not sort of have a, a game plan in place in a a project timeline, we're going to find ourselves, you know, down the road and, you know, she's just going to develop it and that option's not even going to be on the table if that happens. So I think we, we need to have a listed to do, someone managing it and a timeframe on it so that we can work towards the end goal on this project. If something a little more formal, then give us updates because I'm not sure who's going to be giving us updates going forward.
I agree.
Yeah, that sounds fine. You know, and it, it is true that those, all those options are not mutually exclusive just because we might start doing one of this. And if the, if the best one does come to pass, it's not a bad thing to have one of the others already done.
Is DOT even contacted at all or even gone up to look at it?
I don't even think we can answer that question, George, because there's not been anybody put on it to follow up with DOT to address this with them. I know we were sort of talked to Tom Golden about it, but my understanding right now at the state is the only thing they're discussing is COVID. It's, you, you can't even have a discussion about anything else right now because they're trying to deal with that.
Same thing with the mass work grants or something like that. It wouldn't, they, I mean, doesn't even, isn't even pretty good at writing, no. Possibly.
Could you? On the mass work grants, part, because part of this process, I think, early on, when, when we were talking about it, you and I, you would say that there would probably be needed a mass work grant to bring the water or sewer line under the bridge and up Route 40. Is that something that was ever addressed, talked about, planned for?
Yeah, I mean, the mass work program, you know, they're actually accepting applications now and they have rather some flexibility. But it has to be tied to a specific economic benefit or, or in this case, a community benefit. And, you know, we'd have to determine again what, what it is we're seeking and then, and, and dealing from the legislative perspective in the state. I think they're looking for a sense, you know, because I, I've spoken to Tom Golden about it as recently as this afternoon. And I think they're looking for is, is, is the community behind a plan. I mean, they don't want to expend resources. Certainly the legislative delegation doesn't want to expend political capital and then find out the town says, ah, never mind, you know, we're not going to go there. And so I think, I think they're sort of looking for, has the town coalesced around, you know, a demonstrated support for the, for the, for a plan, including if this case is for the access road. And then you, and then I think you can then get some more action from the state in terms of a DEP, I'm sorry, mast dot on the easement and also questions of funding. The transportation bond bill is in committee because the House version, different from the second Senate version. And we're not sure what's going to come out of that in terms of any funding availability. So I, I think what, what, what we can do is at next meeting, you know, we can come in and, and give what you're looking for, which is a overall summary of what are the considerations here for, for this Ledge Road truck traffic issue? And then put the, you know, the description of the option, the estimated cost, timeframe and, and so forth. And then, as you said, have a discussion in terms of which ones to pursue and how you wish to pursue. And, and, and then, like you said, have a coordinated discussion. Obviously, the executive session portion would not take place in open session, but in terms of these, these options, you know, in terms of bus turnaround, access road. And, you know, the intersection of with Dunstable and Ledge Road, which, as you may recall, at one point included sidewalks. So I think, you know, I think we can, we can give you that summary and then have a discussion. And as you said, is it something that you need to then get some of that sense of community support for and, and also what, what contributions it now make?
There's ceiling on that.
Along with.
Do you arrange, ceiling, arrange your money?
No, I mean, I, I think, I think that's, that's, we, we provide the best estimates that we have of what it would, what it would entail and what the funding source would be. And obviously, the most challenging one is, is the access road. I think the others we have, you know, we, we've heard in the past and we'll pull all that material together, what it would cost to secure the easements and build the bus turnaround, what it would cost to secure, you know, to do the design, because you remember the Ledge Road and Dunstable Road intersection, you have the utility pole. So you need to address the relocation of the utility pole. There's probably a taking there, design work and so.
Paul, on that, my, my recollection was that the previous engineering estimates that we got or ballpark estimates that we got for the pole option were based on, I think, an outside firm. So can we, can we look if there's a more cost-effective way to do that?
Sure.
Okay. I, I guess, given the lateness of the hour, I would recommend that we save the detailed discussion for next meeting because I'm seeing there's some critical fall town meeting things on the agenda that we still need to get through. But that's just me.
No, I think that's a, again, good, good comment. We'll move along and just, Paul, if you're going to sum up that list for the next meeting, if you could just, if you're going to list, you know, costs and what the options are and so forth, maybe you could also list what has to fall into place other than dollars and cents, you know, you got to have tuning buy-in. It's got to, you got to have the DOT buy-in. You got to have the, just if you could lay out all the pieces that have to be done under each option, just so we know a full list.
Okay.
Thank you. Wildlife feeding bylaw? Any comments for anybody on that?
All I can say, I, I've, from the comment from the previous meeting, I, I did have town council, Paul, have a, put the revision phrase in regarding the animal feeding. That was the question at the last meeting. So I think, you know, I think I've incorporated everything the board wanted for at this point. Again, you won't need to sign the warrant until the Monday after Labor Day, your first meeting in September. So you can have this discussion at your next meeting if you'd like. But in essence, that's the only change from what you had previously was council inserted the phrase of the property owner for the feeding issue under that paragraph G would have to be notified by the animal control officer.
I'm okay with this without any more discussion.
Same.
I'm thinking if you want to, if you want to take a vote, you want, I'll second it. If that's a motion, I'll.
I think we make a motion when later on, George, this is for fall town meeting.
Yeah.
This is just, this is just to see if we can wrap a bow around it.
Right, stop for the next one.
Okay. We'll go on to town meeting manager bid awards.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I have a report. Michael McCall finished this up before he departed. He put out the RFP for the air quality testing. You know, following in the citizen petition article at the town meeting. Two proposals were received. They were both deemed as, as responsive to the RFP. And the lowest price proposal is from GZA Geo Environmental, Inc. At $38,400, which falls within the $50,000 town meeting appropriation. And it's interesting to note that GZA Geo Environmental, Inc. is the one who performed the similar testing in the town of Westford. So based upon this, we're seeking the board's confirmation to award the bid award to GZA Geo Environmental to have this testing done. And again, the, I think, if you call the summary of the testing plan, would we have testing done now while the plant is in operation? And then there'd be testing done after the season. And then again, you'd have the comparable data, you know, for those purposes for the two plants. And then obviously, we've got some data that GZA performed. It's a public record for what they did in Westford. So we believe that this met the intent of the citizen petition article. And what, what we would do is, you know, you know, commence with, with the contract award. And then, you know, and then as it gets refined, I'd bring it back to the board. Last thing I want to do is, is, is move forward and say, oh, well, why didn't you test at this location and so forth? And then obviously have the petitioner involved on the agenda saying, yeah, this is exactly what I'm looking for. This will be sufficient. But I think the key thing now is let's get the firm engaged and then, you know, map out, you know, relatively soon because, you know, we are nearing September, but, you know, let's get this test, try to get this testing done, you know, this season in terms of when the plants are operating and then go from there.
If there's no comments, I'll make a motion to approve the bid award for air quality testing as presented.
Okay. Ken? Sorry, we have a motion. Sorry about that. We have a motion second, all in favor by roll call. Pat?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll, we'll, we'll secure the company and then they said, I bring it back to you before anything is, you know, moves forward in terms of implementation.
Okay. So that brings us to the town manager reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item this evening I put in your packet, the first draft of the fall annual town meeting warrant in terms of a summary list and the actual language of the warrant. And, and how this will go from here is next meeting, I'll bring back a second list just if there's any changes. And then the following meeting, which is your first meeting in September, would be the time that you would sign the warrant for the fall annual town meeting, you know, on. And again, the, the meeting date is like Monday, October 19th. So again, you're just two months away. Again, just looking at real quickly, the first one is always reports of offices and committees and, and we'd hear from the visions and values committee and, and so forth. Second one is cemetery improvement fund, typical article at, at every town meeting now, it seems, as they continue to work on the cemetery. Third one is the annual article we have to do with the fall annual town meeting because that's to be done by the end of the calendar year. That's the amount of the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund. You know, it's usually less than $10,000, but we have to do the appropriation at town meeting. Fourth one is a placeholder for funding for collective bargaining agreements. As you know, we have outstanding agreements, contracts with the dispatchers and the police sergeant, superior officers, union, sergeants, union. So there's a placeholder there. Five would be any amendments that are necessary for the fiscal '21 operating budget. Six would be the fall appropriation where we take the free cash and the amount that's part of the sewer construction stabilization fund funding plan is, is identified. That number there is, is the number from last year. So it's not trying to indicate this year's number, that 384-986. It's giving order of magnitude of what that's been last year. Article seven is, is a placeholder for capital improvements. Again, I, I think, you know, we heard loud and clear that there, you know, there was the issue about the sidewalk and road funding under capital. We now have a little more clarity, although we're still waiting for federal action in terms of stimulus funding. But clearly the state has given us. So, you know, we, I think it's worthy to consider to have perhaps capital. And then the other one I think may be considered as if, if. And then the other one I think maybe considered is if, if it goes back to the Parker School Kitchen. If the schools are not going to be providing lunch services, this might be the time to, to move forward with that project, which is significant. But you probably get a, you know, a, a good bidding market and actually probably a good interest rate. So again, it's a placeholder for capital. And, and while I'm saying that, I think what I would envision is, is that. In September, once the warrant's done and signed, you know, that, that, that we have a, a. Tribe board meeting of the school committee, selectmen and finance committee. And just make sure that, you know, where everybody's at, everybody's comfortable moving towards fall town meeting. By then, hopefully, schools will have opened or, and have a sense of, 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 you know, where things stand, even though there is subject to change. Maybe by then the federal government will have a plan in place beyond what the president has sort of done by executive order. So, and anyway, then the next articles are the petition articles by Paul Vergazio about using free cash, reduce the property tax levy. At this point, we still do not have a certified free cash number, but it certainly will be done. Generally, it's done by the end of this month or early September. The article ten is, is, is an article I put on, it's always on fall town meeting, is whether you transfer some of their free cash to the general stabilization fund. The next two articles are the citizen petition articles with Paul Vergazio, which would be taking money from the stabilization fund to reduce the property tax levy. Article thirteen has been submitted by the planning board. That's the amend the zoning by law regarding historic preservation and reuse. The language of that article was forwarded to me following the last planning board meeting. I was able to get it into this draft. You know, we'll tighten up the numbering, but that's the, the text I think is complete. Article fourteen is the wildlife by law. And then article fifteen is general by law amendment regarding the connection to sewer that we talked about earlier this evening. So that's what, what I have at this point. You know, some of these are, are going to involve some debate. You know, if you start getting into, particularly at the bottom of the warrant, you start getting into discussions about. We've seen in the past, the historic preservation reuse by law takes, takes some debate. Wildlife feeding by law will have some discussion and certainly the sewer connection by law will have some discussion. But if there's anything else you want me to be preparing in, in terms of additions to the warrant, please let me know. As I said earlier, we'll bring a second draft to you next meeting. And then the following meeting, your first meeting in September would be the time you'd sign the warrant. And then we'd immediately go to the finance committee for them to hold their hearings, you know, because again, the, the meeting is October nineteenth. The finance committee really needs to wrap up its work by the end of September in order to get that report out. Generally, they try to do two weeks before the meeting.
Oh, I had a suggestion come to me or a request that with respect to the tribe board meeting. If the landscape that we're going to be discussing, discussing, excuse me, is, has enough complexity. That might require some time for everybody to come to a common understanding that. Perhaps we remain flexible to have more than one meeting so that. There's time to digest and collaborate on whatever. Budget decisions need to be made.
Okay.
So I'll just throw that out there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not envisioning a lot of change from what we just did in June. I mean, right now I don't have any proposed changes to the operating budget. But again, we want to leave that possibility for discussion because I think is, is was noted earlier. We're, we're really, particularly on the school side, we're really unsure what's ahead of us. And, and also we still don't really know what federal assistance would be. But yeah, no, definitely, we can, we can continue to refine this right up until the time of, you know, town meeting. Again, that's, you know, we're, we're, this is assuming the town meeting goes off as scheduled on October nineteenth. And I did speak to the moderator earlier today. We are looking at the possibility, in the event it's necessary, to have a fully remote town meeting. You know, virtual, what have you, in the event that conditions are at the point where. That, that's required. Otherwise, it probably would be in the high school gymnasium again. Or, you know, again, it's the, 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 the constraint you have at this time of the year is if you're going to get your tax rate approved. And everything done, you really need to have your appropriations done, you know, in, in the. End of October timeframe, so the assessors can have a timely tax classification hearing for you. And, and get that approval done within a revale year, you know, done by early December, so the bills can go out by the end of December. Okay, so thank you. I'll leave that possibility of more than one tribe board meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The selectman liaison reports and referrals, Pat?
We have meeting minutes to approve.
Oh, meeting minutes, I'm sorry, I jumped one. So we have the June first meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June first twenty twenty meeting minutes as presented.
Okay.
Motion second, all in favor by roll call, Pat?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Liaison reports and referrals, Pat, do you have anything?
Um, I guess the one thing I, I just wanted to mention, I mean, you got, everybody knows how much I like these Zoom meetings, so I won't go into too much on that. But one thing I wonder if, is there some way to, to kind of limit the, the chat function? Except for when people are expected to, to speak. You know, during open session and during a public hearing, that's fine. I mean, I, I guess we would have to leave it so that somebody can tell you that they want to speak. But I'm, I'm sure everybody has noticed all the comments that were going on throughout this whole meeting tonight. And none of those show up in the, in the minutes. And I think quite frankly, I, I think it's disrespectful when people are putting chats out there when somebody else is talking, sometimes even about something totally different. It's, it's distracting. I, I don't know. I, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but it, it doesn't really add to the conversation.
In a regular meeting, you wouldn't be allowing that anyway.
Right, exactly. That's the point.
You're suggesting shut it. Is there a way to shut it off when it's not appropriate?
I'll check with, yeah, I'll check with Pete and after there's. I'll check with Pete Dula and when we're done with any open session and public hearings, then we'll have it shut down.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one solution to that, yeah.
The other way is to shut the chat screen, but.
Well, you know what my preference would be, but you don't want to hear that again tonight.
I know your preference.
I'll save that for the next.
Anything else?
That's it.
Emily?
Nothing, nothing in the past week.
George?
No.
Virginia?
Um, yeah, I have a couple. So pending negotiations with the teachers' union, the school committee has voted to start the school year in a hybrid model. With some students attending in person and some students attending at home. Just a reminder that parents need to fill out Dr. Wang's survey identifying what option under this hybrid model. You would like to choose for your child. And I would just like to extend my thanks to the. School system administration and staff and the school committee and all the volunteers that have been working on the subcommittees. I think this has been a very difficult process. It's one where you're never going to please everybody. But I do think a lot of thoughtfulness and thoroughness has gone into the process and I appreciate that. From the conservation commission at tomorrow night's meeting, they will be discussing an offer made to the town to acquire a small parcel of budding right reservation. Across from the Warren Pole Farm that would enable easy access between the two. And then I just had a couple of questions. Paul, I was on the meeting portal, the Acela meeting portal, just looking at committees and trying to find some information. And I noticed that it seems to be very out of date. And even some of the vacancy numbers don't match what we're reporting from sessions. So I don't know how that, how that gets updated, but I was wondering if we could look at it so people have the accurate information.
Yeah, we're, we're looking for a new platform, but I'll work to see if we can put something, temporary placeholder in that gives up to date committee composition.
Okay. And then I, I just had two procedural questions if, and if it's not appropriate to discuss here, maybe it's another agenda item. I was remembering as we've been approving some of these RFP awards, I had asked this question a while back. In the Board of Selectment Policy, section one dash two six, it says that the selectmen shall be notified of and allowed to review all contract proposals, RFPs and bids at the town manager's office. At least five working days prior to the bid award. So I was just wondering, is, is there a way that like we get notified if there's a particular RFP where we'd actually like to look at the details of the RFP? Before we come to the meeting, is there some kind of procedure that was in place for that?
I don't, I'll look, I'll look into it. I had, I had, now that I'm making, I had asked that the proposal on the air quality be submitted with the agenda. And I see tonight it wasn't, but, but I think that's what I, what I would do is that you can have the proposal, but thank you.
Okay. And then the other procedural question I had is in section four two of the charter. It talks about appointments of employees by the town manager and. It, it, the way I was reading this was that we have thirty days in order to approve it. So my question is, are we supposed to take some kind of approval on the assistant town manager? It says if the board of selectmen shall fail to act, appointments made by the town manager shall become effective on the thirtieth day following the day on which notice of the appointment is filed. And for the purposes of this section, notice should be considered when it's filed at an open meeting of the board of selectmen.
I, I believe that refers to committee appointments and department heads. Of which the assistant town manager is neither.
Well, it says, it says in the previous paragraph, it says department heads, officers, supporting its employees in all according to multiple member bodies. So that's why I raised the question, because it seems like it encompasses.
No, it's not everybody.
Employees and, and we haven't been doing that, so I just, I wanted to get some clarification from that.
I, I don't have the language in front of me, but we've never brought all employees before the board. We've never brought like a DPW laborer or a clerical employee or so forth. I'll look at the language and, but I, but my understanding was it was department heads and committee appointments, but I'll.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I know it's like real time here, but if we could look at it, I just, for my own understanding, I appreciate it.
Is that complete, Virginia?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have nothing, so.
I will motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion second, all in favor by roll call, Pat?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And with that, we're adjourned.